I'll call this meeting the Santa Cruz County City Libraries Joint Orders Authority to session. We have the roll call, please.
Chair Jamie Goldstein, City of Capitola.
Here.
Susan Moriello, County Administrative Officer of Santa Cruz County.
Here.
Jenny Haruyama, City Manager of City of Scotts Valley.
President.
Tina Scholl, alternate for Martin Bernal, Vice Chair.
I'm here.
Okay, so first I guess we have a review of the agenda. Are there any changes to this agenda?
I just have a question. I know we have our Citizen Advisory Group that usually has a spot on our agenda. Where will we be doing that today?
I say Director, member.
Director.
Director Moriello. The Citizen Advisory Committee recently met on Monday night to have a discussion about this. I was hoping that I could, at the end of parts of the presentation, see if Shawn Campbell, who is the Chair of that committee, has any comments or additions.
Okay, thank you. That'll be great. I just wanted to make sure we had time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will note that this is a different format from our usual agenda.
Yes, it is.
It looks like this is more geared towards a study session where we're going to be focusing on the budget. So, the next item on our agenda this morning is Oral Communications and in lieu of some of the other spots that we have on the agenda, sometimes this is the opportunity for anyone to address this board on any item that's not on today's agenda. Would anyone wish to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. I'll bring it back to the board members. Board members, no comments. I guess I would welcome Jenny to our board and welcome her to our community.
Jamie, I just actually started work almost two weeks ago in the City of Scotts Valley, where I am from and my family's from, so back to Santa Cruz roots, so very happy to be here.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, so that turns us over to item four, which is Presentations by our Library Director. Ms. Nemis, your first meeting, so welcome as well.
Thank you. I would just like to introduce myself to the audience as well. I think this is my fifth week in Santa Cruz. I've been a library director for 11 years in Ramsey County in Minnesota, which consisted of seven public libraries. During my tenure there, I had the opportunity to remodel or rebuild all seven libraries. The last one will open in January of 2017. I'm really proud of the work there, but I'm really excited about this new challenge and so incredibly pleased with the support the committee has shown through Measure S. And I just want to say that the opportunity to redo these buildings gives us an amazing, amazing opportunity to rethink how we do our business and to do it better and provide stronger access to the public. Today, we're going to talk about the budget, and I think in light of Measure S, our long-term budget forecast becomes a really important set of discussions that we need to have so that we ensure that we can support these wonderful new buildings. I just want to, in the study session today, of course it doesn't work. I tested it. Did it turn on? If you could just... Today, I was hoping that we could talk about the forecast for the library, the 2016-2017 budget. If you'll recall, the JPA has approved a four-month budget which lasts through September, and we have several outstanding issues, including our administrative cost reimbursement, our reserve policy, a reimbursement proposal around Measure S, and then discussions about how we're doing our budget and accounting in terms of cost allocations by branch and budget format. My hope is that through that discussion, we'll be prepared in September to pass the annual budget. The other thing we really want to talk today about is facilities planning with Measure S. How are we going to potentially sell these bonds? And what are the project priorities and timelines? Again, most of those issues are very much up in the air, but we wanted to put something on paper so you had the opportunity to discuss it. So let's get straight into the forecast. As many of you know, the library has two primary funding sources. One is the MOE funds, which are property tax-based, and the LFA has an agreement that gives the library over the next five years about $5.5 million. It will grow slightly because of some revenue from the City of Santa Cruz, but not significant changes in the MOE funding. I think the revenue source that potentially has the most variability for change is the sales tax. I know that all of the cities and the county have spent a great deal of time forecasting their sales tax estimates, and so we are estimating 2.7% growth in the next fiscal year, or in this fiscal year, 2.5 for the following two years, and 2.0 in the out-years. I went and looked at each of the budgets. For this fiscal year, the county's estimating 2.6%, Capital was doing 3%. And I apologize, but I couldn't get that Scotts Valley figure in time. I don't think these are overestimating or underestimating. I think that in all of the budget documents, it refers to the potential for a downturn in the economy, and this seems like a reasonable revenue assumption for our short-term future. Any questions about that? Is that inconsistent with anything that you were seeing locally? And I just wanted to show a slide, if it's okay, Lynn. We'll go to the next one. That shows what those estimates, back one, what those estimates do in terms of dollars. So you do see that they produce actual revenue. And if we go to the next slide, I just want to start talking about expenditures. This is materials that you've seen in the past couple months. Our primary growth in base level costs are in the areas of healthcare and CALPERS, and we have potentially growth of $1.3 million in those expenditures over the next five years. So that is something we're really going to actually have to deal with. If you look at our budget 2015-16 over 16-17, you'll see that it grows by about 6% in personnel costs with very little change in FTE. So this becomes our most difficult challenge to face. Again, I think it's very true of the jurisdictions in which you come from. Let's move forward. You asked for an analysis of collection spending. This shows our collection spending over time. You can see that at our lowest point, we were spending about 5.4% of expenditures on collections. At our high point in the last several years, it's been 9.6%. Our current budget for this year contemplates an 8% allocation. It puts us just over $1 million here on collection spending. I did look nationally. On average, libraries are spending about 11.4% on collections. So as we calculate our out-years at 8%, that will probably put us behind competitively with our peers. And you said they're at, what? 11.4, and our budget's contemplating 8%. And you can see in the past, we've varied. I think the lowest was 2010 at 5.4%.
Can I ask a question on that? Does the shift from print to digital over time, does that mean your dollars go further or not necessarily?
It's a really interesting question and probably needs further exploration. I've heard it argued both ways. It depends upon the purchasing models of the people we're buying from. One of the things we're seeing in the marketplace a great deal is the vendors are treating electronic collections like print collections. So if you buy a book, only one person can check it out at the same time, and at the end of 26 uses, it evaporates. And that's often true of a book after a certain number of uses. It usually is worn out. But the marketplace and the digital world hasn't been able to move beyond the rules of the print world. And you can imagine that the cost of producing a digital version is significantly...
Different.
Different. I think the other thing we're seeing is they'll sell us a digital book four or three times what it costs for a print book to the public in the marketplace, and then we'll have broader uses. Sometimes we're buying things that have... Shelley, I'm using this off my experience, but this is happening here as well. So we are in this really strange time where the environment's changing, but there is no purchasing model yet. And so I don't feel like we're necessarily getting ahead on print materials. If we could buy them permanently, we could share them broadly, which is technically possible. That has not been achieved yet.
And books that are in the public domain now, how are those treated for libraries? Things like the classics and all?
There are many electronic sites that offer them for free. I'm sure we're linking to them. One of the things that I've found is, let's take a Tarzan, which is in the public domain. Often, the reading experience on a book that's in the public domain is poor, like they literally printed a print book, and, you know, as your screen size changes, and it doesn't have sort of that adaptability. So in my past, we were buying some of the things in the public domain at very low cost, but just would give us that pleasant online reading experience. Is that true, Shelley? But ultimately, it would be great to create more base dollars for the collection. I need to point out, this is a moving target. The moment you make something the standard or benchmark 8% of revenue or percent of expenditure, you're perpetually moving up where you need to be on spending. But I think for a community this size and an expenditure level of, you know, 10 branches, we are underspending in collections and need to do some improvements.
Did you say 26 uses?
That just seems to be a standard in the publishing world right now. I would say that books in a physical library, we hold lots longer. We usually don't remove it for wear unless there's water stains, the bindings coming apart.
Are the cataloging, because I know that the cost of the book is one thing, but the cataloging and getting it into the system is oftentimes significantly more than the book itself. Are the cataloging costs, again, different when you get to digital media?
So this system in 2011, or maybe earlier, really sort of moved to copy cataloging. So you get a record in advance that is almost entirely filled out, and you can improve that record. Usually you make some local changes to it, but a huge, significant amount of the work is pre-done. To be honest, the library's been doing that with their print materials too, where they're buying the...
Pre-catalog.
The pre-catalog. I'm looking. I'm speaking from Minnesota, but I'm looking. Yeah. So that I... I think that efficiency has already been gained.
We have to get to a place where good enough is good enough.
This is Shelley, who's in charge of our collection management. Let's move forward, Lynn. Okay. So just on these sort of core pieces of our budget, if we look out in the out-years and the salary and benefits being the largest, we're really looking at about a $1 million deficit by 2021.
I'm sorry, I can't see the years on the bottom. I have a high doctor appointment at 4:30. I need to... Obviously not cancel, you know. So is that bottom on the current year? Oh, thank you, thank you.
So I'm just going to give you, I always bring an extra copy in case the technology doesn't work. And I am on page eight of this handout.
Thank you so much.
So the, in the blue, is fiscal year 14-15. 15-16, it shows $250,000 in the red. 16-17 showing $20,000 in the blue, and then you see significant growth in deficits.
And what did you do with the expenditures? Did you just...
Salaries are inflated. The estimates are around... Salaries are inflated, using the contracts, which expire in 2019, so they're pretty predictable. We used the CALPERS and health estimates that were included in this. We kept collection spending at 8%. And I will come back to this chart later in the presentation.
And the rest, you just kept flat for now?
I think there's modest inflationary growth on supplies and things. Is that true, Marcus?
Yes.
So I actually wanted to add a couple other costs that I think we really need to talk about as we talk about this million-dollar problem. First and foremost is hours. I think, and I will do the benchmarking studies if you would like me to, but I was really surprised at the public service hours of this library system in light of its size. And I think, I know hours were greatly reduced in 2011 and 2008 as a result of the recession, but especially with the new buildings coming on board, I think this is an issue we're going to have to look at and address. An estimate was done several, in the last two years, I think, about what it would cost to bring back the 2011 hours, $220,000. 2008 hours would cost $690. I want to redo the calculations on that, and we can talk about this later. I think we need to do a strategic plan this fall. And one of the things I've heard as I've talked to employee groups and to community members, you know, they're reflecting this hour concern, but they're also saying that they feel like the library's too centralized in its staffing, and that they would like to see more localized efforts occur again. And, sorry. One of the things that could potentially offset some of these costs is pre-looking at our staffing deployment. So I'm going to say these figures are very rough at this point, and we have some work to do to really narrow down what it would cost to expand hours, and we need a little bit of time. But it definitely needs to be on the plate as we move forward with the building projects. Next, Lynn? I don't know why I... Oh, thank you. I don't think I have a cold. Okay, so the other thing we need to talk about that I see as an ongoing problem for the system has been deferred maintenance and really creating in our base budget enough resources to care and maintain our buildings so that they really truly can have a effective life cycle. We expect we'll add 20,000 square feet. Okay, this is the one problem I didn't expect.
So take your time and drink a little water. Anybody got good clothes?
Anybody got juice? Do you have any juice? Sure. I'll try anything.
You know, in this break, Marcus, maybe I could direct a question to you. When we're talking about retiree costs, I know that there's assumptions built into that about how quickly the employee workforce transitions over from classic PERS plans to the Pepper PERS plans. I know the UAL for the unfunded liability payments for the classic plan doesn't change, but what sort of transitioning were you anticipating in those multi-year PERS cost projections? If that's clear. If not, I can...
Modest. So we're following the similar trends of the city of Santa Cruz, general employees, the non-safety employees, so we have very modest transitions to Pepper tiers. As you know, the public safety is where one or five transitions in a public safety position can have a material impact on cost. Miscellaneous differential between classic and Pepper is much smaller in cases of much bigger transition. So I think if we look at demographics, by the time we get to 2019, 2020, the demographics would say there will be more attrition, transition, change, and then pull-up in phase of the library. But over the next several years, we don't have anything materially different than what we've seen historically.
So when are you going to do your next actuarial evaluation of unfunded liability? Do you do them in addition to the work that PERS does? I mean, I know Bartel did some of your preliminary estimates. Is he going to do them again soon?
We have Bartel currently on contract and...
Yes. So is he going to give us a separate number for the libraries?
No, that's not part of our contract.
Well, that may be a good idea so that we could see what the turnover is actually going to be, because I don't know what the demographics are of the library staff, but I keep hearing this concern about succession planning and, you know, the baby boomers making their way through the bubble, and so it may behoove us to follow up on Jamie's concern.
I think that that could make sense. I mean, as the board likely knows, with the changes in CALPERS, independent cities were all calculated independently, our own actuarial liability, and for some of us around the table, the results were sort of shocking because our demographics of our employees were different than previously we've been pulled with other cities. So it's a figure worth trying to get at. You know, there's obviously a cost attached to doing that, so we'd have to come back and see what that cost would be, but it is an open question.
He's already doing the study. It shouldn't be very much to have him just segregate out a portion.
Well, you have to look at the demographics of the specific employee group and then compare...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The study you're anticipating is not what we're doing. We're doing a different test assumption on our... So what you're looking for would be an additional scope over local...
Okay. Okay.
I'll put it on the list of things to...
Yeah, so Bartel and Associates is an actuarial firm, and they have assisted local governments around the county for years in trying to, you know, manage our way through all these PERS, Pepper changes so that we can make good assumptions about what our unfunded actuarial liability is. There's a requirement to include those figures in our CAFR, our annual financial reports, and so everybody wants them to be, you know, complete and accurate as they can be. And so when Bartel looks at them, he's looking specific to your jurisdiction as opposed to when the state is looking at it, they, you know, make a whole bunch of assumptions that may or may not be relevant with your group. So it may be worth it to have him spend a few extra minutes.
And how do you handle that unfunded figure? Do you create reserves around that?
No. It sits there as an unfunded liability, and you either pay as you go, or you just make a decision to pre-fund portions of it, and then...
And you're allowed to pre-fund?
Yes. Yes, and PERS has mechanisms for pre-funding, and PARs has mechanisms for pre-funding. There's lots of choices about how to do pre-funding, but you have to decide, you know, whether or not you want to do that.
And you can't issue pension obligation debt, although that market seems to have dried up a little bit. But in the day, Capitola and Scotts Valley both did that. I don't know about the other cities. 2%. I don't know that there's still a market or those are still viable, but that was a third option.
Does that include the pension unfunded liability in OPEB?
OPEB is different. OPEB is different. OPEB, I haven't heard of anyone pre-fund, I mean, bonding out an OPEB liability to pay it off, but I think, I know at 911, we set up an OPEB trust.
In our local trust.
Yeah, at the 911 center, which we'll meet in a meeting later today. And Capitola leaves someone up. I don't know if the jurisdictions have sort of pre-fund the...
Well, my question was, is if you're separating out the library, are you looking at it comprehensively with both the pension unfunded liability and your OPEB? Because I'm assuming you've got employees that there's an OPEB cost to that, so that was actually my original question.
The city doesn't offer very much in terms of other employment benefits for retirees, but I don't know, there must be some.
We did a study. It's somewhat dated, and we certainly didn't break out library.
But it's a small, you don't do a lot on the...
There's two versions that factor in OPEB. One is the benefit, and then PERS, there's implicit subsidy, so retirees can stay on their CALPERS, health care system, that typically is a lower rate than if they would have purchased it otherwise, so there are two components to that. So even though our benefit is very modest, there is the implicit subsidy that is also factored into that, so that could combine, could be a, maybe not material, but a significant number for the library. Probably recommend looking at OPEB as well.
Yeah, of course.
I'm learning. Okay, let's go back to sort of not-on-the-table facility costs that are there. So we're estimating an additional 20,000 square feet after the building program's complete. And while those spaces will be new, for sure there'll be operation and maintenance costs, but it would be great to build in some level of capital expenditure into the library budget so that we never allow the buildings to fade as much as maybe they have faded recently. It would greatly reduce the long-term need for bonding for the building in the future. The other thing I would like to say is, I looked, we're spending about $8.59 a square foot to maintain our buildings, which was better than I thought. I come from an environment that has a standard of $9.50 a square foot. We had been using FOMA standard, which is Building Owners and Managers Association, which is a private sector standard. I know there's things like NACUBO, which is the university standards of how much you should be budgeting per square foot, but I do believe we're still underfunding at least by a dollar from the standard I used to. And if you consider that cost of living's probably 30% higher here, it probably would be more substantial. So when I look at that, using sort of that analysis, I think we're between $100 and $300,000 underfunding our ongoing maintenance of our facilities. And some of that would be, would come into play as buildings go online. We don't have to start with a 20,000 additional square feet assumption, but as a Capitola comes live, as a Felton comes live, we really need to take in consideration the additional square feet. The other experience I've had, though, is that with new building construction, we were really able to reduce operating costs from a utility perspective, and I think in almost every case of every building I worked on, we actually reduced gas, electrical, and that's in a winter environment. In one case, we doubled the size of a building to 73,000 square feet, and our utility costs were less than the prior building. So in light of the age of these buildings, there's some really interesting opportunities to look at as we build.
Do you know what our utilities costs are as a percentage of our budget or as a total number?
I can figure it out quickly.
Just approximately.
Kira, do you know where it is in here?
Well, you could tell me later. I'm just curious as to...
One or 2% range?
One or 2% range.
And is that inconsistent with what your experience you account?
You know, I'd have to look, to tell you the truth. I haven't paid attention. We've been doing, we've been doing a lot of retrofits and moving to more efficient energy, and so it's been moving in the last several years, and we have a bunch of projects online as well, so I'd have to, I'd have to look at those utilities. well. So I'd have to, I'd have to look at those utility cost trends again to be current.
The water costs are what we're linked to.
Oh.
The water costs, I'm sorry. Dramatically change our cost profile for utilities.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
May or may not be universal with the other jurisdictions.
Well, we get a lot of our, you know, mid-county branches are from Soquel Creek, and their rates have gone up rather substantially. And the cities have gone up substantially as well.
You had mentioned that we were underfunding the maintenance between $100,000 and $300,000. I'm assuming that's system-wide?
Yes.
Do you have the breakdown of deferred maintenance cost per facility?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
It is, yeah, we can talk about that. We'll get into that conversation in Costa County. The one place we really do Costa County by branch is around facilities.
You know, I should just mention, because we've been talking about this, that there have been discussions in the past of how best to do this. When we brought the Live Oak branch online, we talked about the issue of, you know, future maintenance and maintaining the building. And the county has set up sinking funds with some of the other buildings where we actually, where we're turning a building over to somebody else, where we actually require them to deposit an amount into an account, which is then used for the maintenance of that structure that belongs to the county so that it's maintained. And so we might want to consider that. Another potential strategy, and again, we talked about this with Live Oak as well, is to just transfer the obligation for the maintenance of the facilities to the jurisdictions and basically say, everybody take back their buildings, they're your buildings, you keep them up. And, you know, I don't know that that's a good idea, and I'm not too thrilled with having to figure it out. But in the, you know, in the face of the likelihood that we're going to be having to evaluate other strategies to come up with significant amounts of money, we might want to consider that as an option.
I'll follow up with you on that, if that's okay. Which gets us to the 2016, 2017 budget. One of the questions you had is the detail behind the budget. I'm going to pass you out. Spreadsheets. This is the budget that you have been...
At least if I just gave them, sorry.
You can see the, this is a budget proposal that you have seen in the past several months. This contemplates a $2.3 million reserve. It is the old discussion around the administrative overhead costs. And what it shows is an operational surplus of $18,400. This shows an increase of revenue of 1% and an increase in expenditures of 1% as well. And there's several really sort of important decision points we need to make in order to finalize this budget. I did want to point that the piece that you haven't got is the detail about how these budgets are created. And there is in here the detail of the budget by branch for facilities.
In this packet, so?
In this packet. It's towards the end. And there's also, I think the end is sort of more the capital expenditures from maintenance. And in the middle, there's something about, you can see water, sewer, refuge by refuse...
Refuge.
Refuge by branch. So let's start with the decisions that we're going to have to make by September if we want to improve the budget. The first is a discussion about the administrative overhead, which has been going on for several months now. And I was hoping that Marcus could join us at the table. I do have the original memo that was sent on Angelide, talking about a potentially new approach to the overhead in case he didn't bring yours. Do you want to talk through that?
Sure. This particular table represents a modified version of the city's cost allocation plan that would be presumed to be a charge to the library system. The board and many people in the audience know that historically, there was a flat percentage rate, 5.5% of operations that determined the administrative charge. The recent analysis looked at two variations, one continuing a flat 4% charge, or a scenario of administrative charging based on cost allocation plan. The Table 2 chart up there, as shown in the memo, is the version of our cost allocation plan that would be used for the annual charge to the library for the city of Santa Cruz to continue to provide administrative services to the library system. A couple, because the library is different than many of our enterprise funds that our cost allocation plan is used for, there are some modifications to our base plan to get to this chart. One of them included the first line, city manager, general support. That line was reduced significantly under the presumption that the library director would, is clearly no longer an employee that reports regularly through the city manager or works regularly with the Santa Cruz city manager, but clearly is more of a relationship with this board and conceivably would work with each year's board chair instead of those hours meeting with the city manager of Santa Cruz. Those hours would be meeting with the board chair, hey Jamie, of the library system and rotate.
For six months.
So that was a significant reduction between our basic cost allocation plan and what would be used to allocate costs. As far as HR and finance, they were left status quo, modeled in the same criteria that we use to allocate costs to our other agencies within the city of Santa Cruz, or predominantly our enterprise funds, water, garbage, sewer, and such. The data systems line, that would be a direct charge. The proposal would be that that's allocated based on direct charges. There are certain systems that the library inherently uses that are part of the city of Santa Cruz's infrastructure. We would allocate those based on the annual fees that are assessed by our vendors, whether it's our ERP system for payroll and financial accounting, or some of our server licensing costs. And that cost would then be, you'd take the aggregate cost for the total city and then allocate that based on a unit count for the library. The final line item is a public works charge. It just falls right out of our cost allocation component. Public works has a very modest user interaction with the library system, different than the rest of the city. So that just represents a very modest amount of work that they get involved, either in their fleet management, very, very occasionally on facilities, but that's not routine. Predominantly fleet management is where they would do more interactions with the library. So those are the components that would be used to allocate costs annually to the library system, should this method be preferred.
And so the proposal that's outlined in this memo was, this backs into a 4% rate.
Correct.
What the city, just so we're clear, what the city of Santa Cruz is proposing at this point is, is to use that 4% rate on a go-forward basis, using a prior year's actual budget on a go-forward basis.
I would say that's an option, you know.
An option.
From a preference standpoint, that's a simplistic, easy option, using the cost allocation plan to derive. When we looked at the cost allocation plan, that was about a 4.08% rate based on looking at the same year. So that was a target where we had proposed a, well, if you wanted to keep it simple, we can drop that down to a flat 4% and have it be a 4% rate. And we can use the cost allocation plan to test that. From a model standpoint, we do a cost allocation plan regularly and routinely, we update it regularly and routinely. It wouldn't be a significant amount of work to follow the cost allocation plan. So I'd say, from our perspective, if the board has a preference on one versus the other, we're open to that.
But we have the forward in this memo, the flat 4%, just for simplicity. Because again, as Marcus said, this turned out to be 4.08. And we said, you know, that 4.08 is pretty immaterial in terms of just savings and efficiencies of us not running numbers all the time. And we think that that's actually a pretty conservative estimate, but we're willing, just, let's just make it simple and easy for everyone. It's 4%. And that is a reduction from the 5.5% for four. So I think the 4% total number is 400, or is it 459? 459. And you can see it's just hundreds of dollars more here. So it's pretty close.
And a big change between the old model was certainly legal services were not pulled out. So legal services are no longer included implicitly through the city's administration charge. It's a separate contract that the library board would have. The change in the city management structure is, those are two significant changes between the old format and relationships and even...
And I would, I would add on the city management line, and I think this is a question for this board too, is with this new board and with Susan working with us, is the understanding that the chair will be the go-to? Or, because we're trying to have that conversation about what's the appropriate level of interaction? Who should it be? And the city really wants to respect that this board is now working directly with the directors opposed to before it was Martine, working with the former library director. So finding the exact balance there. But we did this under the assumption that we would dramatically reduce those hours. Previously, Martine was working with Teresa at least a weekly meeting. And so at least an hour or two a week. And then we had a lot going on, as you know, the past several years. So he was spending a considerable amount of his time directly with the libraries. So we assume that that relationship would diminish, just in terms of maybe having less... I shouldn't say that. We have facilities now coming on board. But this board taking on more, probably the chair, whoever has that position, being more of that resource. But I think that's something that needs to be worked out.
So are there any backups to these numbers? I mean, these numbers are just numbers to me right now. I don't know what they relate to and how those numbers were derived.
Yeah, I think, as you well know, we have Rich Hill worked and spent a lot of time with the cost allocation plan. There's, as Rich can attest, there's very detailed schedules.
So can I have them?
Sure.
I mean, do they exist? Can we get them today? I mean, because we want, we'd like to sort of move on this, I would think, soon. And, you know, I don't feel like I have enough information. I mean, you're basically proposing, for example, let's just take human resources. That's, isn't there 80 people in the library, roughly speaking?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. So that's roughly $2,000 a person every year for personnel costs? That's influence a lot.
Temporal employees.
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
Temporary employees, both that number. Increase that number significantly.
Temporary employees.
Well, transactions are temporary.
Yeah. Well, it would be good to see the backup so that I know how these numbers came about. I mean, 4% certainly sounds better than 5.5%, but I don't know. Once you add the legal services in, it might be the same, so.
So just to be clear, so today wasn't about decision-making, no?
No, 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 no.
Just more information, and then your board's coming back in September.
Right.
Okay, so we have time to get that.
We do. But I think that from a basic strategy standpoint, Susan and I, when we talked about this meeting, we're hoping that we could kind of get a trajectory out of this board. Because what we ultimately need is an agreement between the library system and the city of Santa Cruz for services, a contract, right? And we need to know whether the contract is going kind of down this sort of 4% trailing fiscal year fixed amount or a different model when we pursue.
So then I don't even know how that would work. What does that mean to adjust to actuals in...
So I think, I mean, Marcus, why don't you explain, rather than me trying to?
If it's a cost allocation plan, and just, I mean, the county, you have a cost allocation plan.
Yeah.
Fixed 4%, how you're proposing.
I'm there, yeah. I just wanted to transition. So that's a understandable format. The, what we propose, if we do a flat fee, we would have a trailing fiscal year cycle where the fee would essentially be based on two years ago's operating costs, which would give the library some time and predictability. If their costs were increasing significantly, they wouldn't see necessarily the administration costs increase for another two years, and they'd be planning for that adjustment. It's just a proposal. It's a concept. Not necessarily to the benefit of the city of Santa Cruz, but it is one to try to give some predictability and ability to do long-term forecasts with some credibility going forward.
So whether it was a cost allocation or a flat amount, it would still have that trailing feature?
Well, certainly the cost allocation plan by design does.
By design does, of course. But the flat amount would also, or it would not?
It would.
It would also?
Yes.
So then what would be the advantage to the library to choose the flat amount? If we're going to pay actuals anyway, why not know what the actuals are to make?
Cost allocation, actuals are based on the city's costs. So the library board may or may not know directly what's happening on the city side of the shop or large organization. If our costs go up, it's going to drive the cost allocation plans up. The county getting increased our transition ERP system for its property tax and all that other stuff. So we've seen administrative costs go up.
Right. But that's going to happen under either model.
No, necessarily, under the model of 4%, it's based on changes in the library system, not changes in Santa Cruz. So one, the cost allocation plan is based on changes that happened within the city of Santa Cruz's administration. The 4% would happen based on changes that happened on the library board's expenditure line.
It's 4% of the library expenditure.
Based on actuals. So not tied to any actual costs that the city might be incurring or not incurring.
Correct, which is based on purely...
Okay. So speaking on that behalf, I'd rather stick with the actuals. That's what our JPA agreement says. And I'd rather see what it really costs. Because when we did the 911 center, that's what we did. And eventually, we moved some things into other areas because we were able to get a better, you know, financial arrangement than what we had with a fixed amount with the county and with the city of Capitola. At various points, we had both. So, I mean, if we're going to go to actuals eventually at the end of some period of time, whether it be fixed or not fixed, I mean, it seems to me that if we're spending the money on the finance department doing the work, we should be paying the city the proper costs for doing that service.
So to play this out, what this means then is every year, in advance of the budget time, Marcus would pull the prior two years' actuals. We would run it through cost allocation...
Through the city's finance department, HR department.
Thank you.
Public works.
With the city's actual costs to deliver to services, based upon some allocation that this board agrees to as well.
Right.
Or are we just, are we just going to use the city's current method? I guess that has to be known.
Well, we don't know what the method is. So it would seem to me that, for example, if personnel costs are divided by the number of people that there are in the employ of the city, that might be a good way to do personnel costs. And, you know, finance costs might very well be the amount that we put through as financial transactions minus, you know, certain big fixed price things. I know Rich pulled out things like materials and other big things that kind of skewed it inappropriately. So I mean, I would think we could come up with something like that relatively simply and not have it turn into a big math exercise.
So I would argue the counterpoint. I think that the fixed 4%, and I want to be clear that this is a fixed 4% not of overall expenditures, but this is a fixed 4% of expenditures minus some certain fixed fee things that don't, debt service and some capital expenditures that don't have any really impact on Santa Cruz's administration. And I think digging into the background here makes a lot of sense, Susan. I think understanding kind of where the costs come from and maybe a check-in as we move each year to see whether the 5% is still the right metric to be using and whether we need to take another look at it. But having operated essentially an enterprise fund within a large organization in my previous position, and being subject to a trailing two-year cost allocation, you're at the whim of a larger organization. I mean, I remember when I was running redevelopment agency in Santa Barbara, I'd have a budget that would show up, and suddenly there'd be $300,000 one year from, from our general services. And I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't have authorized that work. I didn't know where it came from. It just got coded that way because they were thinking about right-of-way acquisitions in my project area. So it feels to me a little bit uncontrolled, a pure cost allocation plan. It's this trailing thing that basically is sort of within the administration of the city of Santa Cruz, and we just end up with the bill. And as long as we can feel comfortable with the percentage, and we have some sort of check process to make sure that we're on the right track, I'm comfortable with it. Now, obviously, our board needs to become comfortable with it. But I just wanted to point out those other points and see if we could at least have a conversation about it.
And this is a one-year administrative services contract we're contemplating, or multi-year?
I think that's on the table.
With the city of Santa Cruz, this is a one-year contract, okay? And we're ready, seven months into it, right?
Well, we also have the past period to figure out. I mean, maybe it makes sense to do something different for the past, but it just seems like we have to start at some point. And if we're going to go to actuals anyway, I don't know why we would wait till and then adjust them two years in arrears. That just sounds like a headache in the future to me.
I don't think the concept is adjusting two years in arrears. The concept that's proposed in this memo was that, so for this fiscal 16, 17 budget that we'd be adopting now, it would be 4% of the library's actual spend in 13, 14? Okay, I want to make sure I got that right. So, you know, when we... So, you know, when we adopt the budget this year, and it's 4.59, we know it's 4.59, and there isn't, we have that certainty there in the budget. I guess that's sort of a starting place, like, I think, like you said, Susan, for a one-, two-year contract to get us going, we can divide out, we can look at the backup and divide out the various services that are provided, and think about other ways, for example, could we do finance for less than 2.50? Because this does give us that metric.
Yeah, but again, this was one of the major issues that was discussed when the library JPA was formed, and the language that's in the JPA speaks to actual costs based on reasonableness, because again, I think everybody realizes that we don't want it to turn into some big math exercise. So I'm pretty convinced that we ought to stick with that language that, you know, was so fiercely debated before.
Well, I would argue that this is, I mean, that's what this is.
This is a fixed unit cost based on just...
Well, the 4.59, you see if there is actuals.
Yeah, again, I don't know what the backup to those are, Jamie, you might, but I don't. I mean, all I've seen is, you know, five numbers on a piece of paper with one-line descriptions for each of them. So, maybe there's something more that I could have that would convince me otherwise, but at the moment, it just looks like a fixed allocation, not a, you know, not anything based in...
There's over 80 different metrics in the cost allocation plan, there's a lot of different metrics we use, so 85 different metrics.
You know, I read our cost allocation plan every time we do one, so I know what's in them, and I'd be happy to read yours, so if somebody could provide it for me.
I guess our presumption was that it already occurred with Rich Hill.
No, it never, I mean, Rich, I know Rich worked very hard on trying to come up with some suggestions, but this is the first time we're discussing it as a board.
Sure, no, I understand that.
So, and it is a study session, so I would like that material for decision-making time. So in terms of my trajectory, I'm still on a actual cost basis, but I might be swayed once all the detail comes in. And I'd be interested to hear what others who lived through that discussion in the past may have to say.
So, I think we do want to give staff some direction here for...
Those are decisions today, Jamie, so.
No, I recognize that, but, well, I guess I'll turn to the city of Santa Cruz. I assume you would be drafting a contract for these services.
So, we're in a...
Then, Marcus and I meet with the county and Susan, and talk about the processes that we went through, I think, some of the questions that she had regarding the process and the numbers behind the cost allocation plan in the city. I reviewed, and Marcus knows, and we can talk about our ideas and concerns, and how they may eventually turn out into a product of our show.
That would be an excellent idea, and I know I employed the assistance of our auditor controllers office when I got Marcus's initial memo, and they might be able to help us as well.
That'd be great, too.
Yeah, they might help us as well.
And what's that, completely, we can then come back with a maybe a recommendation.
Okay, perfect. And in terms of the contract, I would think that the contract would be something that would say, here's an administrative services agreement, here's what it covers, here's an amount that we're going to pay for these things based on whatever, you know, fill in the blank, if it's a percentage, or if it's a actual cost, or whatever, we would describe it, right? Isn't that...
Is the hope of this board to, when you come back in September, to have adopter budget and adopt the contracts as well, or approve the contracts?
I would be...
So we may have to bring a couple of versions back then in September, I guess. Because we, I would say, we're in a position too where we've been providing services since whatever time without a contract, and so we're also very eager to get something finished as well. So we would just hope that by September, we would have definitive outcome from this board.
Yeah, and maybe we could handle those as, you know, two transactions, because I agree with you, I think we have to take care of last year kind of a significant hanging chat.
Definitely. And I'll reiterate our position too, we were going for simplicity, without the six fair and conservative, and it would save our finance department a lot of time running these numbers, but it's also a big decision of this board, and we want to be responsive to what ultimately we all decide.
Yeah.
But we, the flat seemed appropriate, but we'll look at the numbers and see if we can answer the questions.
Yeah, and my hope would be that we actually pay you the costs that you incur. I mean, I'm not interested in getting, you know, some big bargain, just because, you know, I think we're all in this together, and we have to be respectful of the costs that you actually incur, and so if you're spending more money, you know, we should reimburse you for that. But that might mean that we want to go somewhere else to get the services through some, you know, some other vehicle, and I think that's fair for everybody as well.
And I have a follow-up question for you, Susan, so I'm, you know, just sitting in, obviously, today, but so in the JPA agreement, there is reference to the actual costs being affected.
Yeah, does anyone have that handy, by any chance?
Yeah, because I didn't...
My recollection is it's based on the actual costs.
Yeah, it's just based on the actual costs, and then it was wiggle room, because again, when this topic came up, and again, there are people here from the old library board that could help refresh our recollection. There was a great deal of consternation about the flat fixed fee, and there was tremendous concern, because there was no documentation that supported that fee, it was just an amount that had been charged historically. Personally, I always felt like it was a reasonable amount, so I didn't feel like that was, you know, sort of an inappropriate charge or anything like that. But there was great concern on the part of many, and so what we said was that we would try to get to actual, but we didn't want it to turn into a gigantic math exercise for everybody, but that we would do it based on some actuals, and we would have, you know, documentation so that the public would understand that whatever we were reimbursing the city for administrative costs was both appropriate in terms of the library, but also fair in terms of the city providing the services to us as well. And we all recognized that maybe the 5% was a great deal, you know, those of us who were on the inside thought, well, maybe that's, you know, maybe it's more than 5%, who knows? But we felt like if we moved to actual, then we could get rid of the angst that existed around the, you know, flat fee kind of discussion. So that's my only recollection of it, and I don't know if Susan has the language there.
The services authority may directly, oops, sorry, the services authority may obtain support services including legal counsel, accounting, purchasing, treasury, human services, payroll, and other services from the parties or private entities at cost by the most cost-effective and service-efficient method available as determined by the governing board.
Yeah, so the at-cost was the way to get away from the fixed fee, but as determined by the governing board was intended to give us some flexibility, so we didn't turn it into some...
Repeat that clause again, it was like cost-effective or something.
Okay, so you can purchase it from private entities at cost by the most cost-effective and service-efficient method available.
Okay. As determined and...
As determined by the governing board.
Okay, thank you.
So just, again, by way of illustration, when we did the 911 center, the first thing that we moved out, the charges, Richard will remember this, he was on the board at that time, was the insurance charges. So we had a specific line item for insurance charges that were being charged, I forget if they were by Capitola or the county at that time, but anyway, somebody was putting us in the pool, the 911 center in the pool, and so we got a fixed amount, and then there was a determination that we could go to SMRS, which is the special district insurance fund, and buy it for about two-thirds of the cost. So we just took it out of the jurisdiction wherever it lived, and again, I forget if it was Capitola or the counties, and we bought the insurances, and it saved us a bunch of money as 911, and it was no, it didn't affect the jurisdiction, you know, it's like a few less buildings to mature. So that's what the hope was here, is that we would be able to look at these costs and say, oh, it's, you know, whatever, $200,000 for fiscal services, but, you know, we can get ABC Accounting to do it, or less, you know, probably wouldn't, but that would be the kind of illustration.
So, before we close out this item, you know, I'd like to go to the public comment. I know that we, we're going to have a public comment, obviously, at different points during this, but it seems like this has been sort of a night for a lot of conversation, and boards talked about it a bunch, so if anyone from the public would like to address this board, please do so, give up to three minutes per speaker. All right, well, seeing none. That brings it back, so there's obviously no final action that we're going to be taking today, but it sounds like there's a consensus on trajectory, and what I'm hearing is that the county will be meeting with the city of Santa Cruz and our interim director of our LFFA to talk a little bit about sort of the backup and what goes into this, and we will be looking at a contract with the city of Santa Cruz for services with enough flexibility in it, so that we can look at it either as proposed in this July 5th memo, or through other, some other format, and make that decision in our September meeting.
Perfect, wonderful.
Great, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
And I have one last thing. The good news is with these ongoing negotiations, if you want to switch the slide, Lynn, this will actually reduce our annual operating expenses by just over $250,000. And so you can see the chart from before, and you see that it, we still have problems in the out-years, but it gives us a little bit of time to work long-term on those issues.
So based upon about a 4%?
Yeah.
Then, okay, that's what that's doing, okay.
So...
And with a new legal contract, okay.
And Marcus, what did we assume for legal services in this out-year projection?
I think we took $80,000.
$80,000? Okay.
And that is, that's not a fixed fee, right? That's an actual contract.
So, the next major issue that we need to begin working on is the reserve policy. My understanding was the brief wanted to discuss it. Currently, our reserve policy, oh, sorry, I wanted to give, this is the spreadsheet that I gave you, updated with the $459,000 for administrative overhead instead of the original. So you can see that there's resources on the bottom line, but I did want to give you a copy of the library's reserve policy from 2013, and it's discussion handouts. We currently operate under a two-month operating reserve. It makes the reserve about $2.3 million, and as part of the current policy, there is also a surplus provision that says that we can't begin to perceive surpluses as recurring until they've occurred for three years, and allows us to spend the funding and your surplus on items, but they really need to be of a one-time nature if the surplus is needed. So, yeah, Marcus, you can always add.
So, when the board adopted the surplus, they bifurcated the surplus into, they wanted to protect one-third, and two-thirds would be fungible, available for appropriation. So, what the current policy does is it takes one-third, and it segregates that and says, we want to protect at least one-third of the annual surplus, if there is a surplus, and the two-thirds, currently, there's no board-created restrictions on that. But the intent was to take that two-thirds and later on develop some additional criteria that could be for facilities and materials. There was concern at the facilities, and also a want to be able to buy new materials, but at that time, those were not enacted, so the restriction is one-third surplus.
The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I did look up the reserve policies of your jurisdictions, two months' reserve equals 16.77%. Capitola, as I understand it, is 10% emergency, 15% contingency. The county is at a minimum of 8%, but they're trying to move to 10%, and then they carry a $1 million contingency pool. Scotts Valley's at 20% in their policy, and the city of Santa Cruz is also two months. So, the range is sort of in the 8% to 20%.
25.
25?
Capitola's 25.
Oh, I have you down as 10.50. Oh, they're separate, they're not, oh.
10.50, they're separate.
Got it, I didn't get that.
Yeah.
What are separate?
We have contingency, 10, contingency, 50, and emergency, 10.
So it's added to.
Well, in contingencies, you do not reserve generally, I mean, you might characterize it that way, but...
Yeah, we characterize it that way, but the really cash flow, I mean, it's primarily a cash flow.
Right, so I think really, if we were to look at that, we should look at that as 10%, and Scotts Valley at 20, and the county at 10, which is our whole, not our actual. Because we all have contingencies that aren't added into this.
Well, we certainly characterize it as a 25% reserve policy, that's the way we characterize it.
Right, but if you have it in your operating budget, it's not a reserve. Under Gatsby, a reserve is something that's either...
No, it's Gatsby reserve.
I'm curious where your general direction is going. Are you in saving mode? Are you in spending mode?
Typically, you don't want to use your operating reserves for spending, so that would be a poor practice. My sense would be looking at capital for facilities, but not ongoing maintenance of any sort. But you can certainly use your reserves for anything you want. I think the board needs to be cognizant of not putting together poor practices moving forward to plug a hole. Let's try to last week.
One of the points I made in a previous meeting, so I'll keep it short, is that the characteristics of each of our jurisdictions are very different in terms of our revenue streams. For example, an 8% reserve at the county, or 10% reserve at the county could be entirely appropriate, given your revenue base is a relatively stable property tax, the size of the overall budget, other factors like that. Capitola's situation, where we are primarily a sales-tax city that's a highly volatile revenue stream, and our smaller budget size, where 25% of our overall budget is not as much money as 10% of the county's budget, our ability to respond to an actual disaster, or respond to the face of the economic downturn, which can have a pretty dramatic impact. For example, in the economic downturn, last time around, we saw $1.8 million production and sales tax, which equated at that point to almost a 15% revenue downturn over the space of about 18 months. So, it makes sense that we would have different numbers, given the characteristics of our revenue streams and the size of our overall budget. When the city of Capitola did a benchmark study, we went and looked at, I think, let's say, seven or eight kind of sister cities, Scotts Valley was on the list, there were a few other cities in the Monterey Bay region, as well as some other coastal cities up and down the coast. We were, at that point, we were at a 15% total reserve policy, and we were actually the lowest total reserves of any of our benchmark cities, with some of the coastal benchmark cities having reserves, policy reserve levels in the 35% range. Again, smaller cities, you know, in sort of high-risk zones was kind of generally what we chose as a benchmark city, places that have rivers, near oceans, and high tourist destinations, things like that.
So Jamie, if you look at this fourth paragraph here about the Gatsby requirements to be in one of these three categories, where are your contingencies? Are they committed, or assigned, or unassigned?
Help me...
On the first page, sorry.
First page.
These are the, these are the Gatsby definitions of reserves. I'm just wondering whether or not you're using contingencies synonymous with reserves, and it really isn't the same thing.
You know, maybe I need to go back and check.
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, because we all have contingencies, I mean, the city of Santa Cruz also has contingencies in excess of their reserves, and we do also, not a lot, but, you know, we all do, so it would seem to me that we ought to make sure we have apples and apples when we're comparing.
Right, right, because...
So if we want to count both, we could say contingencies, reserves, and then fund balances, if we want to use that differently. I mean, we have different definitions.
Yeah.
I ran into this last time with the definition of fund balance. I was like, wait, is this fund balance? And everybody was calling it something different, and...
Well, I think that makes a lot of sense, because, for example, you know, the city has a sinking stores account, we have a sinking fleet account, we have, you know, our internal service funds, we have, we have a herd reserve account, we have all these other stuff that I have.
Leave that on the side.
And so maybe there's looking at both sort of, kind of the Gatsby categories by jurisdiction could be helpful for the libraries, because, and maybe they were talking about the stores.
The Gatsby categories are interpreted very differently, and no one really knows the truth, so let's just put that out there.
That's, it may not provide as much clarity as we hope.
Exactly. Everything is unassigned, and I'm good. But Susan, to the point of your question, you're raising this because you want to get a sense of the board wants to stick at that two-month reserve, or adjusted?
Well, I was just told that the board wanted to talk about whether this was the appropriate level, this... appropriate level. This policy is several years old. I do have to say that the advisory committee did talk about this on Monday night, so they may have some added input.
I have this kind of an interesting question. What is the board's policy or perspective on the purpose of the reserve? Because it's kind of a non-essential service. When you, because when I think of reserves, I think of, you know, economic uncertainty, catastrophic things. And so how does the board envision using the reserve, and what circumstance do you use the reserve? Because that would give me clarity on whether two months is accurate or not, and whether it would be appropriate to use it for materials or for something like that. And so I kind of need that question answered, of what historically the board's viewpoint is on that.
I don't think this board has had that conversation yet. I think, yeah.
Because I think that is the fundamental question here that we need to be in agreement on before we can even delve deeper into the weeds. So.
I mean, we don't have the same uncertainties as a municipal jurisdiction.
Exactly, my point exactly.
So I.
Well, we.
You do and you don't.
We do and we don't. We share some of the same. I mean, obviously, we're not going to be responding to.
Right. So if there's a recession, for instance, do you want to use these reserves to expand your hours or keep the library open during that time? Is that the sole purpose of the reserves? Or is it for when we hit a huge equipment replacement issue that is going to cost millions of dollars, and it's a one-time thing, we use reserves? So I don't know.
Yeah. I think that's a good question for us to have, because I don't think this board has had that conversation yet.
So rainy day fund versus stopgap?
Yeah, yeah. And it could be both. I just.
Right.
I'm here to think.
So we, by way of reference, we just went through this with the CDC. I'm on the CDC board, and the CDC board did not have a reserve policy. And we, Pacific Sub, Special Subcommittee, we took a look at this, and what we ended up doing was coming up with sort of two. And one was kind of a cash flow, sort of a, to help the cash flow and also to take advantage of unique opportunities for the CDC, you know, both unique opportunities on the plus.
Right.
You know, there's a, the president decides to visit the region, and you're going to market that. Or on the minus, where there's a unique opportunity, you know, an earthquake, and you need to help the area recover. Then there was also just sort of the economic downturn and kind of to try to smooth out the balancing of revenue and expenditures. And so we ended up kind of with both and sort of bifurcating them.
It looks like this memo contemplates us a little bit. If you look at, I'm sorry, is that what you were going to say, Marcus? Where are we?
I'm buying my time.
Oh, you stepped in.
Oh, okay.
Looking for that momentary pause, and I'm not very good with just injecting myself. But the current policy, you know, again, prior to boards, I think it's a good question about what does the current policy feel like? The current policy has kind of three categories. One, if there's just a cash flow thing that happens during the year, if you want to prepay something, or you have a large capital outlay where your cash flow is going to go, you know, dip down below that reserve level, it allows you to dip down in one fiscal year for a timing perspective. Two is if there's a decrease in revenues that speaks to a recessionary or slowdown economy, decrease in MOE or the sales tax greater than anticipated, it allows the reserve to be used to keep operations full. And then the third category speaks to that more catastrophic thing, whether it's a facility, urgency, safety, life and safety circumstance or operating circumstance, or, you know, an external event, earthquake, disaster. So it kind of breaks it down into three categories and allows for use for all three. Short-term, within a 12-month period. Longer-term, if there's a decrease in revenue or immediate, if there's an emergency.
So the Gatsby category would be a less restricted one then, right?
No, no, no.
More restricted.
And to that point, you know, Gatsby is Gatsby, and operational decisions is a whole nother perspective. So in case of capital, if 10.15 adds up to 25, and that gives you the comfort level at your phrase for bad times, then it's really 25% is what you're looking at. But if it's 10% is what you're looking at, and the 15% for some other purpose, then it's the 10. So it's really an operational determination. A couple of years ago, Gatsby really rewrote the rules on what is a reserve, and it really limited and reduced the ability to call reserves on face of balance sheet. So it's really, really, really narrowly defined now. Not as far as operating. In contrast to how municipalities across the nation wanted to.
Right. So none of this, none of this would count as Gatsby reserve?
No. This policy allows it to be a Gatsby reserve. And what Gatsby requires is you have to have very uniquely defined circumstances of when you use it, and very narrowly defined. Whereas prior to that change, you could call a reserve a reserve without a whole lot of detail about when and how it's used.
May I ask a question? In the last economic downturn, there was a point in time where the city was cash flowing the library. In light of these new arrangements, I'm assuming that is no longer available to the library. And my assumption is if, so I'm used to a more conservative-sized reserve, but I'm interested in a larger one. If there's backup, if there's, I mean, if there's backup, I don't need as large a reserve. If this JPA is an entity unto itself, then that speaks to me to have a larger reserve. And so I know that the city has served that role, but I also know that the city's sort of stepping away. And so that is sort of an important question to me.
And the JPA agreement doesn't discuss this? Or does it discuss going back to the member jurisdictions and supporting, or is it just a fixed MOE?
Do the other thing.
So in terms of the library's cash flow during the course of the year, does it have a similar profile to the cities where sort of the low point is mid-December? Is that? Is there a revenue and expenditure issue with the library? Does cash come in, just as expenditures go out during the course of the year traditionally, or is there?
Yeah, it's very predictable and very stable. It does not have light swings.
But do you need to start the year, could you start the year with $0 in your checking account, or do you need to have money in the checking account at the beginning of the year to start the show?
That's.
Are you talking about, okay, so you paid all your bills, and you have your fund balance there, and then you have dollar amounts that are reserved to certain buckets of categories of reserves? And you always have that kind of extra cushion? Is that what you're talking?
What I'm explaining, so in capital, for example, the timing of the revenue and expenditures.
Property taxes first, man.
Yeah, property taxes first, and Board of Equalization, such that we end up going about negative 10% of general fund spend, you know, minus some of the fund transfers and things like that, around mid-December. And then we get a payment from the Board of Equalization, we get the property tax disbursement, that brings us up closer to even. We get, that sort of brings us even. So if you use fund accounting, right, for the whole year, what happens in the interim doesn't really matter. If you have to make payroll.
Right.
On December 10th, fund accounting, you know, doesn't work as well, because you have to make payroll. So that's my question is, is how much.
Revenue coming in is stable. It's not subject to timing of property tax.
When does the MOEs come in?
Every month.
Is it working monthly?
It's distributed monthly.
Okay.
So we're distributing monthly, okay.
So there's not as much of a, sort of a cash flow issue with the library as maybe some of the cities?
The cash flow issues have been economically driven, or they have a large outlay. When they were had, when they did, when they had the very modest cash reserves, if they had a large outlay during the year, they were, they were keeping close.
Right. Okay. Because you guys issue trans, right, for the, for cash flow each year? You guys don't.
And so we, I wasn't, I'm not in the details, but so what, Marcus, can you describe what the city did for the library then, at the recessionary time?
This was several, you know, five, six years back. There were, there were many months where revenues were declining fast, sales taxes especially.
When it was just plummeting.
Product taxes eventually, outpacing operations. And before the reductions were made, there were shortfalls, there were timing shortfalls, month, month, month. They were running out of cash. So the city was factoring that cash.
They just ran a negative, they just ran a negative account balance, and then when the cash came in, it adjusted. And they presumably would have assigned a negative interest earning to that period of time so that they keep the accounting consistent.
But there was, there was not an external agreement to that. It was just, it was just done. So I can't speak to the nature of the decision-making at that time, other than just trying to keep things moving.
And you'd like an express statement of what we're going to, how we're going to handle it, should that happen?
So here's what I would.
I just think it has an impact on the reserve.
Okay, so here's, here's my suggestion, and I don't know if this works to everybody else, but let's see how it sounds. I think we should have an economic downturn reserve, a reserve that is to cover those kind of things where the sales tax is plummeting, and it's happening over the course of a year, and you want to level it out so you don't have this.
Like a budget stabilization.
Like a budget stabilization. And I think we should establish it as a Gatsby reserve, probably in the uncommitted or unassigned category, because otherwise you have to have an act of Congress to get it out, it seems to me. But again, I'd leave that up to the accountants to figure out. I also think we need an equipment replacement reserve. Like when we buy a car or a, or a library bookmobile or something, and, you know, there should be a certain amount of money put aside so that when it comes time to replace it, you've got an equipment reserve replacement fund to go to, and you're not sitting there trying to figure out how to, you know, spend X dollars of capital expenditures. I mean, it would be nice if we could do that. I don't think that's a Gatsby reserve. I think that's just an equipment reserve that lives within the operating budget as an internal service fund or.
There is one. Yeah, I was just going to ask. There is one.
Yeah. So that, so I think we could do that for both vehicles and.
So maybe an overall capital that gives you a little more flexibility, because it sounds like you have an internal service fund that's already embedded in your budget. Is that correct, Marcus?
For fleets.
For fleets.
For fleet only.
Not IT?
Not IT, yeah. So no IT.
Well, I would think IT should be one of the categories. And then I think there should be a separate facility reserve for major, like how do you replace the roof and, you know, this kind of thing. But, but I think we should think about that separately, because, you know, now that we've got the new facilities coming on board, and we're going to have to figure out the overall finances, we may want to do that differently. But I would think that that should be an ISF as well, that, that we could set up somewhere, whether it be in our jurisdictions or in the library. And then I think we need an operating contingency in the budget, that we should specify some amount, that we could come up with a ballpark that we all think makes sense, that would cover just, oh, wait, wait, you know, the copy machine broke down sooner than we thought, we have to just go get another one, and so we do it, or, or whatever. And then we should have policies with regard to fund balance. And fund balance at the end of the year, in my opinion, should just roll forward to the next year as available financing. And then, you know, we should recognize that fund balance tends to be of two characters. One is of a one-time nature, because you never know if you're going to have it the next year. And sometimes you wind up with the same ongoing fund balance. Like in the county, for example, we estimate a turnover factor. We actually assign that turnover factor to our operating budgets, so we don't wind up with a whole bunch of fund balance during the year, struggling to meet all the requirements of our various programs. But then we wind up with the surplus at the end of the year. So we want to try to, you know, keep that fund balance modest and, you know, just let it roll over if it's extra. But I don't think we want to assign it to, I mean, I already missed the whole one-third, two-thirds thing. I was like, wait a minute, where are we going with those thirds? But somebody would have to explain that to me again. I don't know what it, what it was intended to do, but.
What percentage do you use as a turnover factor?
You know, we don't, we don't have a standard percentage. I can tell you this. When I, the first day I took over the County of Santa Cruz, the fund balance on June 30th that year was $34,000. That was obviously too small. Now it's much greater. We have multiples of millions of dollars at the end of the year. But that's because we budget a little more conservatively now than we did back then. But we still acknowledge that we have, even now, you know, operating issues that need to be financed to a better degree than we have. So I think you just, I don't think you plan fund balance. I think it just happens, and that you just let it roll forward, whatever it is. And you don't, you know, you don't go ahead unless you're trying to increase your reserve amount. So in the county, for example, we're going from 8 to 10%. So we're rolling a portion of our fund balance into that. So that's, you know, we could get that 8% up to a 10% number by the year 2021, I think this is the year. So. So those, I think that would cover everything that we've been talking about. I think it would give you the ability to say, okay, here's how much we think the reserve ought to be for economic downturns, and here's how much I think we should budget in contingencies. In the 911, we budget 4% I think in contingencies, if I recall correctly. So we always try to fund that at 4%. And if we use it, then we have to refund it. If we don't use it, it then becomes, you know, a factor that you don't have to budget for the next year, because it's just sitting there. And it gives you that cushion, so if something should happen, you could move something out and take care of it.
I'm more than happy to work on language in the reserve policy, but ultimately, we need to have an assumption for the 2016-17 budget, which we're hoping to apply in the September budget analysis. So I'm looking for direction about, should I apply the 16.77%? Under our initial assumptions, we've fully funded the 16.77%. And do you want to move forward with that, or would you like an alternative for September?
So.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see your recommendations, is what I would, how I would answer that. And I think 16.77% is a lot for an organization like this, and that it probably could be safely lowered, as long as we had those other internal service fund accounts addressed, but others may have.
On the internal service funds, I'm not, I'm not quite sure whether it belongs in the reserve, and I would want to take a look at what we currently have. Maybe there's some modifications in the operating budget that need to happen in order to secure that we're putting money away for equipment purposes, like IT or whatever. And, because I do like the categories that you identified. I like the budget stabilization, the operating contingency, the example about moving the fund balance, rolling that forward. But I still think that there should be a capital reserve that you just have flexibility to use for a variety of different things. Because part of me is just still thinking the equipment and the fleet and the facility stuff is so operating budget-y, that I think we'd like to take a look at what we're really putting money aside, and maybe have that information brought forward in context of what you're recommending.
Yeah.
And I would want to see the numbers on, you know, maybe a lower reserve, like a 12% versus a 16. You know, I'm more of a very conservative, so I'm very comfortable with 16.7, but when you start parsing out this.
Well, when we tell you that you're going to have to increase your contribution to the library.
Oh, I already know. I'm setting myself up.
You're going to like that 10% better.
No, no, I agree.
Would you allow a budget that maintains the 16.77% through the end of the fiscal year?
And then do you kind of just in parallel tracks?
And then at this fall, basically look at this in detail and come up with a new policy?
I don't have any heard from.
I can, I actually, everything everyone has just said, I think is right on target. I think the notion of looking at our ISFs, internal service funds, and maybe setting up, if there aren't, setting them up properly to probably account farm service and operating expenditure. Maybe right now, this is kind of a one-size-fits-all reserve, and maybe I think as Susan outlined, kind of really like an economic stabilization reserve, and then kind of a cash available reserve. And at the end of the day, it may be 16% between these combined figures may end up being the right number or something. I'm not sure. But looking at it that way, that seems to me a kind of a clear way to think about it.
Is there?
I'm also comfortable, like you said, I know we need to move forward, and kind of try to move forward, maybe with sort of status quo, but in the box of things for us to do, you know, that comes as one of the things for us to do.
So Marcus, is there a contingency in this budget?
No.
No? Okay.
Oh, and one of the differences, I just, why, I mean, I know you're a well lawyer, Susan, but the differences of the 911 is that their revenue streams are, in a sense, dependable, since we just.
Well, we don't have a reserve up there.
Right.
The only thing we have is an operating contingency.
Basically, we're all the backstops.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So unlike, unlike libraries, where the library has packs.
But we do have a separate capital budget from an operating expenditure budget, and that's funded separately, you know, based on what our requirements are usually. It's, you know, the computer systems need to be replaced, or all the furniture. I mean, those people are sitting in those chairs 24/7, so the furniture gets replaced quite often.
And Dennis does a real good job of looking at multi-year kind of capital expenditures and sort of charting it out and trying to help us understand how to add in the flow and.
Right, and trying to match the ebb and the flow. If the revenues are coming in a little better, then those become a year where it's been a little bit more. It's a management issue.
And then I would say the two months is obviously the City of Santa Cruz policy, but I can't really speak too much martini's in this conversation. But I will say, I would really love to hear your recommendations. If there was any adjustment, what would you do with that? Would that be an investment back into the collections that you were speaking about earlier, or, or how you see that be our best use?
So I think you could have a surplus, and anything above that could be split 50/50 between whatever special pots of reserves that you come up with. So there's a lot of different ways to do this.
And we'll talk a little bit about what I'd like, I think that's.
Okay. You ready to plan it ahead?
I've got some ideas.
And I'll say with our surplus policy, we're not really finding that we're having extra, because we find that as our base grows, of course, our two-month reserve grows. And so any extra we're having is just rolling back into that. So we have a similar plan, where if we have excess above a certain amount, then we can go invest it in. go invest it in capital or whatever, but we've not been in a position to have that, nor might we if you just look at the cost.
And if you don't have the opportunity to have that, I think the purpose is established you to best practice that this is what you're planning for.
Yeah.
So even though you may have like, you know, five bucks to stick in it, it's better to establish that practice early on.
Jefferson, this might be an opportunity where the advisory committee wants to weigh in if you're...
I think that's a terrific idea. Would anyone from the public or our advisory committee wish to operate a public testimony?
I will. We did discuss this item in our agenda on Monday. I think there was really consensus about a percentage, kind of similar to the way that you all discussed it. You know, nobody really had a strong opinion about 16.77% versus 12%, what have you. We do have members on the advisory commission that participate in school boards and other public entities, so they have their own perspectives driven from how those entities manage the reserve policy. But, you know, I think this is an area where having a library board full of people who manage jurisdictions is particularly useful. And, you know, I think we're interested in seeing what the board has to say on this topic. Thanks.
And for the record, that's Sean Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. So do you feel like you have a little bit of direction here on how we're going to proceed to this year's budget and then on a go-forward basis, looking at these reserves and the internal service funds?
When you're saying this year's budget, you mean the fiscal year that we all just started?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, I mean, we've adopted a four-month budget right now.
Four-month budget, right.
So we need to adopt, finish it out. She needs, you know, Susan needs to prepare something, Susan and Marcus need to come up with something.
So you have a July, August, September, October budget?
Yes.
Is that right?
And then, and then we need to adopt something for the next eight months.
Some plans, okay.
And so the question is, is obviously...
What is the assumption for the reserve?
Yeah, okay.
So we've been going for an hour and a half. I have a parking challenge.
Yes, you do.
I do have a parking challenge. I need to think about my car in the next 15 minutes. Is this a good time for a break or this is a good time for a break? Okay.
I've been minding for three hours, so I was anticipating.
I ran out of quarters. So the expenditures last night, I've just been out of general...
I'm not all...
I went out a little while, so...
Yeah.
Well... All right, let's get this going again. That's fine. All right. So I am, we're going to reconvene our library meeting here this morning and we are going to take a slightly different strategy for the remainder of our study session. I understand, Jenny, you need to leave at noon. So what we're going to propose is we pivot now just going to talk about the reimbursement back to the Library JPA for some of the costs incurred associated with Measure S. And then at that point, we will adjourn at the LFFA, take care of business at the LFFA because there's some required votes, and then reconvene back as the Library JPA.
So we are recessing as the Library JPA and reconvening as the LFFA right now?
Not yet, not yet. We're going to talk about the LFFA reimbursement first.
First, as a JPA.
Yeah, because I know it was an important conversation. That's not a question. Important conversation for Jenny to be part of, and then obviously, some of the LFFA votes require all parties to be present.
Okay. So we wanted to talk about the LFFA reimbursement because it does affect our planning for the 2016-2017 budget. And Rich has done some really great insightful work on thinking about this. I think a portion of LFFA expenses were paid in 2015, 2016 and in the, out of the operating budget. So there's a question about reimbursing those expenses and also planning for the expenses in 2016, 2017. Rich?
Sure.
And we don't have any paper on this, right?
Do you have a staff report prepared for you?
In the LFFA.
It's called Reimbursement to Library JPA from the LFFA. It's a two-page staff report and probably the most important part about it is the second page, which contains a chart of expenses. Okay?
I'll get extra copies of that by chance. I left that packet on the way.
And it should be in the Library JPA agenda.
Exactly, that's it.
But I think you've gone all the way to the LFFA agenda.
Yeah, I'm in the LFFA.
Yeah, it's not there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's in the LFFA agenda? Okay.
I'm having trouble finding it.
Yeah, I don't think we got paper, but maybe...
It looks like...
I know we did in the... Okay, thank you.
And I will, can you make a copy of this?
This isn't, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's in here.
Okay.
It's in here. It's in the variant. It's in the variant.
It is in here?
Yes. The last variant, here it is. The last four pages.
It's in the LFFA?
Yeah. It says page 27 at the bottom.
Yeah, page 27.
No, no, that's, this is for the...
This is the, yeah, this is the LFFA side, but he's discussing it in the JPA context at the moment.
Let's make sure we've got...
He's saying if you look at the chart...
I apologize, Rich, that was my mistake.
No, that's not it.
That's not it, sorry.
I emailed it as a separate document, so...
That was my mistake.
Okay. Well...
We'll get copies.
Yeah, it's a part of the general budget discussion.
It was part, yeah, we got that in our last meeting, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, I might have that before we're here.
And...
We're making copies right now.
It is.
The reverse, yeah. Administered costs. That's how much we distributed, so it's a deduction. Administered costs.
There was a table that...
Okay, so I didn't see that.
That was here last...
I guess it was prior to that.
Prior to that.
So you want to go over in general?
Sure, and then I will leave my chart back for reference. So the formation of the LFFA and the creation of the Community Facilities District, which defined the boundaries for the election and the special tax, had material costs associated with them as well as planning for the election. Those costs included, for the most part, contract costs with Brigham and Associates, In addition to that, the hiring of our bond consultants, which included bond counsel, Jones Hall, financial advisor, Harrell &amp; Company, had non-contingent costs associated with those contracts, which means that those costs are paid directly from the contracting agency and not contingent upon the sale of bonds. So when the bonds are sold, the proceeds of the bond sales are used to pay many of the costs that are associated with bond sale, which include financial advisor costs, which include bond counsel costs as well as rating agency costs and several other kinds of costs. So what the LFFA has committed to and through a reimbursement agreement that we have from the LFFA to the Library JPA are a bunch of costs that would, that have already and will accrue to the Library JPA to pay. And you will see on the second page of the staff report that has just been handed out to you is a list of those costs. And they start from a long time ago and continue on today. And you will see that if you go back as far as 2007, 2008, there's some survey costs that have been paid. And the most recent costs that have been paid to date have been paid to TBWB. And that was a firm that did some drafting and printing work for us with regards to the election. And NBS, which did a lot of tax calculations and so on for us. What is not included in this chart that came after the preparation of this chart is one invoice from NBS that's been approved for payment, about $4,500 or $4,000. That's in the cycle now to be paid. Looking at all these costs that have been spent for the benefit of the LFFA by the Library JPA, you will see that from the beginning to date, $228,826 have already been paid by the LFF, by the JPA on behalf of the LFFA. And future costs amounting to about $404,000 are still out there and are yet to be paid. So the question is, how do you want to reimburse or whether the board wants to reimburse the costs that have been paid by the Library JPA to the benefit of the LFFA? You will also note there's about $15,000 of personnel costs paid for my position that pretty much from, to, through June 30 have been added to it. At the bottom, you'll see a total of $561,000 cost. This $561,000 is the maximum recommended amount for reimbursement. You will also see a chart that says contract costs by fiscal year totals. The recommendation is not to go further back than the 2014-2015 fiscal year, which gives you the 546,686 cumulative total. And that total includes prior expenses paid and future expenses yet unpaid. And some of these future expenses, such as the election costs for $350,000 are estimates. The ABC Law costs at $3,500 is an estimate. So the total estimated contract costs at the highest recommended repayment level, again, is $546,686. If you add the personnel costs, that makes it $561,596. So these are the costs that are eligible for reimbursement. The documents that you approved creating the LFFA and the CFD anticipates the payments of some administrative costs. This is provided for your board's information and it is light direction.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Are there, I know we're not going to take a final action, but I'd like to run this a little bit more like a standard hearing. Are there questions of staff about, the information that's presented about potential reimbursement from the LFFA back to the JPA?
Just one clarification. These amounts that are still to be paid, are these, are these numbers real? Do we know yet what the cost is?
I would think most of these numbers are real. Let me go over a couple of them. I would say that the $11,000 for Jones Hall is a firm number. The Harrell &amp; Company at $6,500 is a firm number. ABC Law is not. I have not seen any invoices from ABC Law. I don't think we've, I, you know, I just don't know. I think that's probably a maximum number. With regards to election costs, the information I received from the clerk of elections was that the cost of elections is $2 to $4. In checking the votes count dot com website, I find that there were 82,000 voters for Measure S. Multiply that times four, which is the maximum amount, you're somewhere in $320,000, $330,000.
And so for my clarification, we can pay these bills through library operating funds, library reserve, bond proceeds, or tax proceeds? And I'm assuming nobody would want to do it from bond proceeds? Do you have any recommendations about which?
Okay. So I don't think you can pay these costs necessarily from the proceeds of the bond sales. And, but the LFFA has a revenue stream through special taxes. Those special taxes that are not committed, of course, to secure bonds can be used to pay for these costs.
That's the tax proceeds.
Okay. Wait, I do have one more question for clarification. At some point along the line, we adopted a reimbursement resolution?
We do. We have a reimbursement agreement with, between the LFFA and the Library JPA that says it allows the Library JPA to pay for these costs and allows for them to be reimbursed based upon decisions of various boards.
Okay, so that's that.
And so, Rich, your recommendation is to pay the amounts paid from 2013, 14 forward, including whatever the actual amounts come out to be of these numbers?
Yeah. My recommendation of the highest amount to repay would be the 2014 fiscal year expenditures.
Which would be the 546?
Plus the personnel costs.
Which is the 561?
Which is the 561.
Okay.
Now, there's options available for your board. As I'm hearing your budget discussion, for example, you could say, let's pay out these costs, but let's put some of these, these revenues into facility capital replacement costs. You know, you have those, those kinds of options available.
And, and this is a question I think for Marcus, was basically, if I remember right, when you were presenting us with kind of a fund balance situation, this was drawing us quite close to zero in terms of our fund balance or was that...
We're imagining you have about $200.
Okay, right, right. There was some scenic. If we didn't budget scenic expenditures, that was going to get us to about zero. All right. Is there any public comment on, on the potential reimbursement from the LFFA back to the JPA?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Would you, would you mind stepping up the slide and get you in the camera? Right there. That's great.
Just so I understand, the $350,000 to the county for election costs, those are not the incremental costs of putting one ballot measure on a ballot that's four pages with 27 members, numbers. In other words, Gail, in the conduct of her office, has to certify votes. She has to certify votes for all the elected officials, all of the various proposals and issues and so forth. And you're suggesting that to add one costs $350,000? I don't believe that's true. This is exactly the same point that Susan made earlier, that the actual cost of adding one item to a ballot is very, very difficult to establish. If you took, if you took all of this kind of cost and applied it to each measure on the ballot, I assure you, the number for that election would exceed the total budget for the Gail's office by three times. I'm just guessing. So that's point one. And I don't think there's anything anybody can do to find out what the actual incremental cost of putting Measure S on the ballot. The costs above it are all bona fide. People spent money. The second point is that the 350, if you persist in this accounting fiction, then I would suggest to you that you take the 350 and put it in a capital reserve fund on the odd probability that you may overrun some of the budgets in the bond measures that you're going to, the expenses. The $62 million came based, three or four... The $62 million came based, three years ago, on cost estimates provided by a consultant, which are clearly out of date. I don't believe construction costs have declined, so there's probably a shortfall in the estimates. So I would suggest that whatever amount you decide to set aside for reimbursement, that it not be given to anybody to put in their general fund, that it be reserved to provide a cushion to cover the anticipated results that the community voted for, which was to fix the libraries. This is not, should not be a clever ruse to reimburse other budgets. So my comments, I assume you understand. Thank you.
So if I could respond, this?
Let's see if there's any other public comment that we could respond to.
Oh, please, okay. Thank you.
Are there, are there any other members of the public that wish to address? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment on this item. Susan, thank you.
Yes, and I was just going to defend, Rich. This figure that comes from the election costs are the costs that Gail develops. And what she does, she's required to follow a specific set of procedures. I'm not, I'm not aware of them in great detail, but she looks at all of the ballots and all of the measures, and then she has to divide up how many votes were cast, and she calculates based on the ballot types and the votes cast and a whole bunch of other things. And so, these estimates have been consistent for a few years, and as Rich pointed out, it may turn out to be less than that in the final analysis. And I would assume if we were to approve reimbursing for the election cost, it would only be the actual costs.
That's correct.
Not some estimated amount. And then, I think that was the only point I wanted to make. Oh, no, one more. The bond proceeds did anticipate that we would repay the LFA. When we did the initial estimates, we did anticipate that there would be costs associated with the issuance that would be repaid. And it does include a hefty reserve requirement, which is a requirement of the bond, so I don't think we're going to be at risk of any of that. That was the only point.
And the only other point I would add is that the $62 million estimate did actually include cost escalations for various branches, for various numbers of years. I still think Mr. Hannah's point is well put, that at the end of the day, costs have gone up pretty significantly, and I'm sure additional funding for the facilities will be, will be helpful. Okay. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for deliberation and direction. I don't think we can take final action on this, but the question really comes down to a budget number for us to put in this year, both on the LFA side and on the library side, is where do we want to land?
So I have only one more question, and I think maybe Nicole, you could help us answer this, or maybe Marcus. The amount of the Measure S installments for December and April, what are those projected to be?
So in 2016, 17, we can initially estimate that the tax levy of $4.15 million for the whole year.
Okay.
The first distribution will come in January with the second distribution in June. Based on what NBS is doing to generate our tax rule, they're looking at a slightly higher estimate, I think of $4.26 million for the year. But this next year is really going to be our test case because there will be corrections. So we should keep that in mind if we're looking into this year.
But it's well in excess of the numbers that we're referring to.
Correct.
Okay. That was my question.
All right. Any more discussion? Anyone want to offer a suggestion on how else to proceed?
Can I ask a process question again? I guess I'm forgetting where we are. So right now, we're still in study session. We're talking about this. Do we need to adjourn this and move to the other meeting? Or?
Yeah, I think this is a budget item for both parties. So my thinking was that this fit kind of on either, either board's purview.
So if I'll jump in then. So I got some questions. So if, so we've got a reimbursement amount of about $561,000, and right now, the library's operating budget is bearing that. And so that means?
Well, part of those.
Has borne that?
Yes.
And will, and once all this is unpaid?
We will, yeah. Part of those costs have already been paid and about $200 and something thousand.
$228.
Yeah. $404,000 are anticipated costs. Now, again, with regard to the biggest one, of course, election costs, the estimate was $2 to $4. You know, that's doubling per vote, per voter. So who knows where this is going to end up, but yes, those will need to be paid, and those will come from, first from the JPA budget with expectation, hopefully, that the reimbursement.
And that was always contemplated, and I think I was at that meeting too, when we agreed for reimbursement.
Yes.
And I did check with Gail Pellerin, and she said the election's billing is not yet complete, so she can't tell us yet.
So with that understanding, we need to come up with some sort of plan for reimbursement, because this is not something the operating budget can bear. That would have a deleterious effect.
That would be my thought.
Yes.
So the operating budget, I think, has included all these expenditures for the Library JPA, and that's when I asked Marcus the question of fund balance. Basically, we know down the fund balance to somewhere, who's projecting about $200,000 left. If we were to take staff's recommendation here, I think, and reimburse the JPA the full $560,000, our fund balance, projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 1516, assuming this budget.
Programmatic changes.
Yeah. Without any programmatic changes, would be $761,000. Does that sound like everyone has the same understanding? Okay.
And that number should be pretty good, because what you're doing is just a budget exercise. You're estimating expenditures at 350 for elections, and you're estimating revenues at 350 for elections. It doesn't matter what those expenditures or revenues are, you will come up with the same fund balance.
On the JPA side, the LFFA side, obviously.
The JPA side, yes, exactly.
But the LFFA side, where since we've never collected tax before, is a moving target anyway.
Yeah.
All right.
But it should also be recognized that these are one-time expenses, and right now, the way it shows up in Marcus's budget, they're coming out of our operating budget now, right, Marcus? So that would mean more ongoing resources available for other things if we wanted to do that.
I'm comfortable with reimbursement. I know we've been talking about it for a while. We just have to pick the number. I think going, not going back to '07, '08 is right. I mean, I think, you know, starting somewhere in either 1314 or 1415, you know, so that there's be a reimbursement from the LFFA, those initial tax payments will come back into the JPA, you know, somewhere in that range that's recommended by Mr. Hill. And I do, I do like the idea of thinking about that in the context of our reserve conversation we had earlier, off the facilities reserves, and thinking about the material budget, hours, all those different pieces that we have. I think we do need to understand the relationship between those things.
So, Rich, could you tell us again why you went back to 1415 rather than 1314?
I had a conversation with our bond counsel and discussed this matter. And essentially, in so many words, he said, the further you go back, the more difficult it is to justify. And when you, when you start bringing in these special tax revenues that have been voted on for a specific purpose, you know, you're better off, you know, being a little more conservative on the 1415. He didn't, I don't think he had a problem necessarily with the 1314, but we're not talking a lot of money spent in 1314.
Right. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Well, I'm comfortable with Rich's recommendations, and that would bring the number up to the $561, $596, $50,000, if you include the LFFA personnel costs, which, again, were directly related to the issuance of the bonds, we could say. So maybe for, I know we can't take a motion or anything now, but maybe for planning purposes, if anybody has any objection, they should kind of address it now so that we know, because this is something we'll have to do unanimously.
That's fine. Support it.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we look forward to the recommendations on how to allocate it.
Fun stuff.
No sense, no doubt that'll be the juicy part.
All right. So with that, I think what we need to do is recess the meeting for the Santa Cruz City County Libraries Joint Powers Board and convene the meeting of the LFFA for this morning. I think we can.
Okay. So let me just make sure, because I was listening when Susan spoke. We've covered administration, we've covered reserves, we've covered the Measure S reimbursement, but we still have to consider the budget, the allocation of the budget format, including the assumptions for things like personnel and sales tax growth and materials and hours and all that still.
Yeah, we'll be coming back to them.
Okay.
So we'll be assessing, not adjourned.
Okay.
So with that, I will convene the LFFA regular board meeting. I will note that the same members are still present. Is there any additional material that was submitted after the agenda packet was distributed? None? Any changes to this morning's agenda? Okay. Oral communications?
Actually, let me suggest that we remove seven items, 7B and 7C, and those can be contained as part of your budget discussions.
Okay. So what we'll be doing then is, since we're talking about our facilities, we're doing our budget workshop for the JPA, we can, thinking is that we can kind of cover those items at that stage. Okay. So 7B and 7C will come off the agenda this morning. Okay. That takes us to oral communications. Does anyone wish to address the LFFA and any items that is not on this morning's agenda but is within the LFFA's purview? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. Executive Director report, is there an executive director report?
It is attached, and I have no amendments.
Okay. Any questions on the executive director report? Seeing none, I will turn to the consent calendar, where we have two items on the consent calendar, approving the minutes from the June 2 board meeting, and the resolution declaring the result of the special election and directing recording of this notice of special tax lien.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Public, public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So that takes us to general business, and this is the second reading for our ordinance levying the special tax. Is there a staff?
Yes, there is. This is, this ordinance was first read in June. There's some minor amendments to the ordinance, and they have been included. This ordinance allows the special tax to be collected for this coming fiscal year and requires a majority, I mean, a unanimous vote. And it is, procedurally, it's important to be conducted at a regular meeting, which we have done so. And it is, I'm ready for questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to this board. Any discussions or motion?
Move approval of the ordinance levying special taxes, the second reading, with the corrections that are noted on page 23.
I'll second.
All right. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, folks.
Well, you know, this is a big thing.
It is worth a hand.
It really is. Everybody worked really hard on it, but I really have to compliment the campaign committee. When we did the original survey, we were looking at 68% to 69%, they were over 7% in the last half. Really good.
All right. And so then, looking ahead for the LFFA, there's still significant work to do, I imagine, and we will be, we have that schedule that's outlined for our LFFA meetings coming up, but this portion of this piece in the puzzle is.
So LFFA will need to develop a budget, and we have a meeting set up on August 2 to talk about that. They'll include budget format, you know, and those kinds of things, and anticipated bond sales. And then, once the budget is adopted and approved, hopefully, it'll identify the various ongoing costs. The next big step will be the first issuance of bonds. And that will include a lot of discussion between staff, reconciling the trust agreement with the amendments, the LFA, make sure that all the interests of those parties are represented in the trust agreement, identify the ongoing costs associated with that. There'll be trustee costs, there may be various reserves that are required and so on. And that first step, that first issuance, will set, I think, the menu for the next months. Okay. The anticipated steps.
And that does represent a fair amount of work?
It does.
Yes.
And I am hopeful that Susan and I can get together, and my last regularly scheduled effort on the part of interim director will end sometime in September.
Okay.
I'll be sending out a memo and letting you know how that's going to work out.
Thanks.
Yeah, right. All right.
Well, I don't, will we have a meeting before then?
We will have, I will tend the September meeting, and if additional work or correction needs to come from the board to your interim director, I'll be here.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the LFFA meeting, and we convene our Santa Cruz City County Public Libraries JPA meeting. Bring it back and help remind us of where we are in the overall schedule for the study this morning.
So we're going to talk accounting, because everybody loves accounting. Accounting's fun. I was told that the JPA is particularly interested in doing, having a better understanding about the financial situation of each branch, and I'm struggling with two issues, one of which is the way in which our organization is actually organized, and the second of which is our chart of accounts. So I wanted to show you our organization chart, and you'll see that we are divided into sort of six areas, none of which have a branch name. If you want, the six areas basically are public services, collections, programming, administration, IT, and facilities. Okay? And so, and all of those subboxes, none of them say, none of them mention a branch. Okay? So we became highly centralized during the Great Recession as a way of trying to maximize efficiencies. And a huge number of our staff, almost, and a huge number of our staff are actually centrally located, and they go out to the branches and do programs and services. So the next slide I want to show you is our chart of accounts. And so each color represents a set of activities. So our chart of accounts doesn't 100% line up with our organizational structure. The difference has actually been created as a result of using a lot of interim votes at the top. But you can see that, so our accounting, we can tell you how much we spend on programming, we can tell you how much we're spending on public services, IT, facilities, admin, but we do not allocate our costs to the branch level or allocate our staff to the branch level. When I looked at that thick packet I gave you this morning that Kira does that shows the budget, less than 10% of our costs are allocated to a branch. So how do I fix that? If you really want to understand, you know, there's a temporary solution where we could do a cost study, and what we could do is take that 10% and allocate it by branch, and then take the remainder 90% and allocate it based on formulas. So public service expenditures, you allocate by circulation per branch. So, public service expenditures, you allocate by circulation per branch. Facilities, you allocate, well, facilities is the one place that is allocated. IT, maybe it's the number of computer workstations by branch. But when you have 10% actual and 90% formulaic, it becomes a really difficult cost study to really make decisions based on, because it's a sense of the thing, but it's not the thing. To do this correctly, what we would really need to do is, I hope, a strategic plan and reorganize. I think a lot of the initial feedback we're getting from the staff and the public is this concept that you're too centralized. So the first thing I would like to do is really study that, is this the most efficient way to staff our buildings? I think a common comment by the staff is, I spend a lot of time in traffic. And that may not necessarily be the most effective way to deploy our very small staff. So I'd really love to spend some time this fall talking and identifying our issues, and then potentially around the first of the year, doing a reorganization. I would also love to redo our chart of accounts. I have never heard of someone redoing their chart of accounts mid-year. It's, it would, it was, ah, cha-cha. Stress at the thought. So if we really want to redo our chart of accounts around a new organizational structure, we would work and identify the new chart of accounts and implement on July 1st, 2017, meaning that we don't have data that is interesting and strong till July 1st, 2018. That is my problem. So I can do the cost allocation study, but it's going to be wildly theoretical, and, or I can, I can do this right, and it's going to take time. Input?
All right. Question?
Yeah.
Do you, do, do cities have to use the state controllers' reporting categories? When you report, do you report-
You're talking about the chart of accounts.
Yeah, for the chart of accounts.
I don't remember that, but I don't know. Marcus, do you know that?
So, when we provide the state controller's reporting format, but our chart of accounts are ready to us in any municipality, and so they can chart accounts the way they want, as long as they can report to the state controller consistently.
So you're reporting to the state controller in this format?
No.
No?
Their format, right?
No, their, their format.
Oh. So you have, you have it broken down by the library, the state, the state format? Because that gives a lot more detail than this does.
Do you say the state of letters reports on the-
Uh, no, state controller reporting. I just don't know what cities-
Do we report to the state from a city basis, or do we break it up from the library?
Both.
Okay, so we should be able to obtain then the report to the state just for the library's accounts?
Yes.
If that's your question.
But does that state report include expenditures by branch?
No, but it does break out in a lot more detail. It doesn't break it out programmatically, like, this is kind of a programmatic budget breakout. It's more operational, it would have things like staffing and-
And the accounting system will produce sort of a expenditure category report. Is that what you're looking for? Like, if you want to see staff, overall staff against postage against, I mean-
Yeah, well, that, and is that in here somewhere? And this, because this is fatter than we usually get.
So that is us doing the budget by program. Do we also budget by, I don't know the language you use for that level of accounting, but I've seen a report somewhere that had, how much did we spend on supplies?
Yeah, it was the library tax, line item detail, and then aggregated up into different reporting categories, so.
So we can get you the line item detail if that's what you want.
And by way of example, if you look, there's a, there's a handout that went in the packet, one of the materials that went in the study session packet was made financial reports.
Sorry, I brought it. That's where I saw it.
There's always a DAFOR cover sheet, and then behind that, there's detail on revenue and expenditures, and you see all the expenditures by line item.
And that was what was sent out?
Monthly.
Right, but, let's see if I already have this.
It came with the packet.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I was looking at. I was also going to suggest to Susan, because it looks like we do have, we have personnel costs broken out by, by division.
And it looks like fund.
Okay. And this was in the packet?
Yeah.
So I have a question that's going to show some of my ignorance. So are there best practice models with respect to altering the charter accounts to be more reflective of an organizational structure? Or can you accomplish that within your existing charter accounts that you have now? Having gone through a charter account process, which is totally painful, so, just so that we all know what we're walking into here, I hadn't heard of that. So I'm kind of curious, who does it, and what's been the success rate? Is it really practical or efficient? And I'm kind of curious your opinion and Marcus's opinion on that.
So, my county wanted more information this way, and we then began to budget by branch. There is a pain factor of, you know, you have to budget mileage reimbursement by branch, so you constantly, with a budget this small, are reestimating that budget and going through the approval processes so that your $70 mileage budget can reflect an $80 expenditure. You know what I'm saying? So it is a more labor-intensive-
Well, I guess we have to ask ourselves, do we want that level of detail? And what truly are you after? Because for me, I'm not sure if I'm after that, but I'll bet you there's other programmatic things that you might be wanting to trap for branch.
And my understanding is that there's an equity question here at the board about whether branches are being treated appropriately. I personally would prefer to operate as a system, but I don't have the constituencies that each and every one of you have. The other thing I'm concerned about is, even though I believe we will go through a decentralization process, the budget will limit how far that that can be done. So I still think the system's going to end up heavily centralized on some activities as an efficiency model. And one of the things we're going to talk about is strategic planning, but I think sort of the number one question this organization has is, to what extent is this a federated library system of branches? Or to what extent is this a centralized library system? And I think, talking to anyone in this room, you might get a different answer, which makes managing some decisions difficult.
Susan, do you think it would be possible to get a branch-by-branch budget prepared that doesn't, you know, wind up consuming all of our time counting mileage trips? I mean, you know, I don't think anybody is worried about, you know, is Aptos using more mileage than Branch of 40? You know, I don't think anybody cares about that, but, but they do want to know how many staff are in Aptos, and how many staff are in Branch of 40, and how many hours are open in Aptos, and how many hours are open in Branch of 40.
Some centralized categories.
Yeah, some major kind of budget-
Little bit like workload measures and-
But even the personnel category, if we just did that, I think would, would, I mean, if you think about personnel as a percent of our total budget, it's going to really push up the volume of our budget that is allocated. Now, the difficulty we have is we're relying very heavily on temp staff, who, again, are going to many locations, so you'll have to take a stab at, and so they'll probably be in a central pool. But you're right, if our permanent staff was assigned by branch, that would go a long way.
Yeah, but what about, because redoing the chart of accounts, and it feels like you'd have this like double layer, because you'd still would want to like differentiate between some of the traditional divisions you already have, you know, what's support services, what's programming, what's, but then you've got this other layer where you're also doing that by branch, and so I'm trying to imagine like as a city, like, you know, we obviously did the budget, we budget by department, we budget by roads, parks, streets, but we don't like differentiate, okay, how much are we spending on this side of the town or that side of the town, and these sorts of things. So what if we tackled it with, with metrics, which is, I think, what I was hearing, where there was more of the kind of the open hours, circulation, the staff assigned, they give us a feeling for where our resources are going by branch, but maybe not a-
Inputs and outputs would be interesting. I haven't seen that study of the system, and I think that's a pretty normal comparison to make, just what resources go into a branch, and how do they compare across branches, and then what are the results? Because it's not as easy to say, this CIRP is lower than that CIRP, therefore this branch needs more money, because it often has something to do with staffing, hours, facilities, square feet, parking, yeah.
Population.
Population.
Yeah, see, I, I think we need to do both, to tell you the truth, and I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think that it has to consume us in the process. And I don't, I wasn't advocating about changing any of the charts of accounts necessarily, and I agree, if you're going to do that, you should do it at the beginning of the fiscal year, not now, but I'm not su, this detail is more than I've seen on the library budget to date, so I'm really happy to get this, and I'll look over it in more detail. I apologize that I didn't, I didn't see this in the original material, but maybe I misunderstood what it was, so this is helpful.
The one thing I would say is that I believe the chart of accounts should reflect the organization.
Yeah.
And I believe that the organization will change, and that we will need to redo the chart of accounts as a result.
Yeah.
What I don't know is how that plays out, but I would love to have the fall to do the strategic planning exercise and rethink the organization, and, and I suspect regardless, we will have to change the chart of accounts.
Yeah.
To what extent, you don't know. To what extent?
It's going to be wholesale or-
But again, I think metrics can accommodate some of the information that we're all looking for, but I do think you correctly point out that it's also a question of resource allocation, that you can't just look at the metrics without looking at the resource allocations.
I would hope that, I agree with the, with the approach of the strategic plan, but I would also hope that we're not led to one particular approach where we're going to redo the chart of accounts to necessarily reflect the organizational structure. I think that might be one possible outcome, but I'd also be curious, what can we accomplish within the existing chart of accounts right now that can get us the answers to our questions with a combination of metrics? Because we really need to think deeply whether, one, this is a priority, what, what we're going to get in terms of huge benefit, and make sure that we're all on the same page, just because of the order magnitude that's involved in this endeavor. So I kind of need to hear more about the benefits of moving a chart accounts to near the organizational structure, because I'm still kind of a little bit uncomfortable with that, because I need to understand whether it's really worth that process, but I also need to hear more about what your desired outcomes are if we went that direction. So just kind of looking at two different approaches and maybe a pro and con of each one, because I do think that it's a lot to chew off, given kind of, this is just me walking into this for the first time, there's a lot going on here, so I don't know, you know, whether this is the bite of the apple you want to make now, or whether there's something else you want to take on, so just food for thought.
I think one of the key problems, I know Nancy, I mean, Susan and I have talked about this, and that is that, you know, we, we do want to get a sense of how much is in each branch, and we can right now. So that's been the big bugaboo in the conversation, is how do we get to someplace that's closer to there, you know, without having the weight of the accounting system topple us over, you know? But it would be nice to know, you know, well, okay, Scotts Valley serves 23,000 people, and Felton serves however many, and their budgets are comparable, and their populations are comparable, and they're, you know, again, it would get to those equity issues that I think have existed for a long time, and, and there's, and I think there's a lot of confusion around that, maybe is a good way to put it, because, for example, when, you know, people look at the Felton Library, they say, oh, well, let's take little town of Felton and compare that to something, but really, who's going to use the Felton Library as the entire valley, and some of the people from Bonny Doon? So when you go ahead and you look at that as the community is, you know, then it's a different picture than, you know, if you're looking at just a little town, and we would have to come to some, you know, appreciation of how, what the patterns of usage are over the course of time. But our sense has been that the county branches, you know, need to be allocated additional hours of service, and Aptos is a pretty, pretty hefty branch in terms of utilization, and we'd like to see, you know, some more resources go there so that we can open that branch more. So that's the hope, is to be able to get it to a quantitative discussion, that we all can achieve the same level of understanding of what's going on and feel like it's equitable and fair, as opposed to just kind of perpetuating what we've had in the past.
And the thing that I completely support is having data that can help you make your decisions.
Yeah. Like, for example, just let me ask you a question. If you're in the Aptos library, and the library is open during a busy time, how many staff are there?
Gail, do you think you could answer that?
There's permanent staff or temporary staff?
How about, give me each member separate? Yeah.
There's five permanent staff. I would say there's probably, at any given time, three of them in the building. The temporary staff, probably two or three at any given time.
And when you say in the building, where are they when they're not in the building? You said there are five permanent staff with three in the building?
So they're actually working the other, the other ones?
Where they're, where they're at work. That five permanent staff is not all full time.
And we're doing nights and weekends, so, so it's not as easy as, you know, you're spreading your shifts over weirder hours.
Yeah.
So, so if you walk into the building on any given day, there's likely to be three permanent staff in the building.
And three temporaries.
And I don't, do you think-
Two.
Yeah.
Two or three, she said.
And they're often doing a CIRP, or are they doing programming and other things?
No, that's, that's the Aptos staff, the reference staff and the programming staff will be coming out.
And doing activities?
From somewhere else.
So again, if I were to take the total complement of 80 people plus however many extra help people, and then calculate how many hours they work, or how many hours they're on payroll, and then subtract their under-used hours, vacations, sick leave, the likely, you know, things that you take off, so then you get their productive hours, and then we assign their productive hours, roughly speaking, on the basis of branches, you'd have a better picture of what the story is than what we have now.
And, you know, what I'm used to is a whole series of internal metrics where you're looking at staffing per square foot, staffing per hour open, staffing per circulation.
That's all good.
And so that you can, and then, that's usually an internal device that we use to say, this branch needs more, this branch can go lighter. I think you have to establish minimums, and the system has, for liability issues, but I'll be frank that I, based upon my knowledge, I believe staffing's very light and overly reliant on temporary staff. And I think that has affected the quality of service we provide to the public.
Yeah.
Okay.
Light on staff, light on materials, light on reserves, light on-
Just take it down, you checkbook, Amy. Just take it down now, come on. Put us out of our misery.
So, you know, here's another question I should ask. Is our per capita spend as a community on par with other places? Or is it just more expensive to operate in library here?
I haven't fully figured this out.
Okay.
At, at face value, no.
Our per capita spend is-
Not.
Low?
Not terribly low.
It's not low?
The last time we looked at it externally, Jamie, and again, I wouldn't want to put a lot of scientific value, we were on the lower end of the middle. Is that right, Nicole? It was, you know, we kind of had the median and the mean, and then we were kind of a little bit below them, but, but not terribly low and not terribly high. So we weren't spending as much as, you know, places that had much more affluent and robust financing systems than we did.
That's my recollection of numbers, well.
Yeah.
And I haven't fully figured all of this out yet. I mean, I think, and the thing I'm going to recommend is a strategic planning process. I think that what the system lack, there's some just pockets of excellence. There's some amazing innovation. I mean, I think it's why the public responds to this library system in this way. But I think that focus, narrowing some of what we do, prioritizing a lot of what we do, is just sort of a discipline that hasn't, that needs more work.
All right.
Okay, so let's move on with the cost allocation, then.
Before we move on, Jamie, do you need to leave right now, or do you have?
For 90 seconds.
Yeah, you gotta go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have action that you need to take, or does that...
How much more action or direction are you hoping for?
I've probably got 20 more minutes worth of...
Other items?
Yeah.
Oh, I would say we keep going as a board.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, but we can at least touch on, and I understand you'll have to weigh in. We won't take any final action. Is there anything else on this cost allocation thing as a board for...
So the direction I heard you saying is, you want more of this data, but it doesn't have to be a three-month activity? And we should look, though, to the next opportunity of the chart of accounts to have this conversation.
I would characterize it as a strategic planning. I agree with you. I think we'll really drive it, and the opportunity to hear from everyone and decide the organization. And also something to think about, if, if all the jurisdictions develop our own libraries, and is function going to follow form? And how much are we coordinating on that, and how much? So I think that there's so many variables out there, it's really hard to pick a direction now. So similar to other direction, I think that remains to be seen. Let's keep talking.
But I don't think any of us were saying, let's start a process so that July 1 of '17, we have a brand new chart of accounts. I think we have other priorities.
I kind of like, would like to see what happens out of the strategic planning process organically with respect to that. And it could very well be that that is an outcome.
But I, yeah, I'm not committed to doing that. Could you do that to get it on board by next year, if that's the direction we go? And you do the planning in the fall with six months? And Marcus, I assume we're very involved in this, too?
Yeah.
Could we get that up, obviously? Because we're going to have to reconstruct our architecture. But isn't, could we do that by July 1, if we decide then, the board decides then? Okay.
Plan.
Like, six months, is that how long this takes? I'm kind of plucking it from the air.
My instinct is only four months is the amount you want to target. You should be able to get done. There's a little operational planning up.
Yeah. And Jenny, was your process along that amount of time, too?
Yeah, I mean, it's intense.
It could be longer. It just depends.
But my thinking is, is let's, let's try to think about it. I mean, it sounds like, you know, there may be ways between the metrics, between sort of thinking about how our staffing models are working, that we can kind of get at the issues that I think Susan's talking about, this equity, and without kind of going all the way back in and like building up the accounting system from the ground up. But maybe not. Maybe at the end of the day, we'll land.
And one of the things I was going to ask, another question that came up, is do we have the appropriate budget format? So I was hoping that you would allow me access to Nicole and Marcus, and have a little subcommittee working on budget format. And we could also work on the chart of accounts issue to make sure it's reflecting where we want to be. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So that's her putting the budget format discussion off. Okay. So the quickie that I wanted to do is, I wanted to bring Nicole up to talk about facilities planning. And there are two major issues we got to talk about, is the sale of the bonds and the timeline for the projects. And I don't think the expectation is that you decide anything today, but we put together a draft so you could begin the conversation.
And I think we're going to lose one of our directors.
So the only thing you need to know is that we need to know when you want your money in time that allows you to spend it within the three-year timeframe, and how much you want approximately when.
Okay.
And then we'll...
And we have a roof problem, so.
I'm sure we'll be talking again.
Thank you.
And should we grab food, or...
Oh, is the food here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Maybe a restaurant break?
A comfort break?
A comfort break?
Can we do that for five minutes?
Yes, we can do a comfort break.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you go to the right, there's one down that way. But I think you may have to have a cup.
I saw this, no unchuck.
Okay, I will reach into the meeting of the library board, and I think we will do a turnover to our presentation from Nicole.
Okay, so Susan Novak asked me to come today to start the discussion about facilities planning and how we're going to create our funding for all the library facilities projects. So this graph in front of you shows the next, this current fiscal year and the next five fiscal years out, just to give you, help you understand when we're going to levy the tax, and provide an example of when we could issue bonds. So 2016, '17 is going to be the first special tax levy. As I said earlier in the meeting or the study session, the first distribution of the special tax will be available in January, and then the second distribution will be available in June. Based on my initial conversations with our financial advisor, Suzanne Harrell, she was thinking we could issue the first bonds in August of 2017. The LFA agreement says that bond, the net proceeds of bonds would be distributed on September 2. So that kind of gives you an idea of when those funds would be available. Next, she staged a second bond issue just preliminarily in August of 2018. And our goal would be to issue the last bonds in August of 2021. So you see, that's five years from the first levy of the special tax. There are two things you want to keep in mind. You know, we have a goal of issuing the bonds most efficiently as possible. So we would really like to try to issue them no longer than five years out from the first special tax levy. The other thing you want to keep in mind is that once we issue bonds, whatever projects are associated with those bonds, we have to draw down the funds within three years. So for the first bond issue, you know, depending on what projects are included in that, say Felton and Capitola, those projects would be drawing down those funds, and then they would need to complete the drawdowns within three years. So that would be by August of 2020, from a bond sale of August of 2017. What we really need is more information from all the members. So we need the members to think about their timing and requirements so that we can stage the funding. We have very limited information. I think the two projects that, and I think, Lynn, if you want to turn it to the next slide. So the two projects that seem most ready to go are Felton and Capitola. Felton, we're going to hopefully be entering the discretionary review process here soon. And Jamie can speak to Capitola, but Capitola, as I understand, it's getting its project manager on board, and is going to be entering the design phase. Both projects are kind of running similar timelines, and we'll see who goes first. But both are kind of anticipating that we'll be under construction by 2018. So they're looking like they're first out of the gate. The other two projects that, in theory, potentially go fairly quickly are Boulder Creek and La Sella Beach. They're smaller projects, and so we're thinking they could be bundled, and we could get those going possibly within the first bond issue. There are, all the other projects have more planning and development to take place. So this is just theoretical. Based on how these projects are actually staged, we could shift them around. But in theory, you could put Aptos, Brance of Forty, Garfield Park, and Scotts Valley in the second bond issue, and then Downtown and Leavoke in the last, or you could switch some of those, you could flip, flip some. We could do two bond issues instead of three if everything's ready to be constructed. It's really a matter of when, the timing and your requirements, so.
So I think really what we need is a schedule over time, because let's say the city of Santa Cruz, they want to start their pre-development activities now. They may need $2 million out of the first bond issue to do that.
Right.
So it's not going to be project by project, which one goes for a second or third. It's going to be, everybody tell us what you need, and then let's go to the bottom lines and try to figure out how to get everybody what they need when they need it, which I think we can do, because the way the financing was structured, I mean, we could borrow the entire $62 million today, but we can't spend it all in three years, so we're not going to do that. But again, I think City of Santa Cruz is going to want free development, Aptos is going to want free development, Capitola is going to want construction money. So it's different phases. But, and maybe Nicole, you can give us a template to use of, you know, architectural services and pre-development costs and whatever, so that we can get some broad categories, and then ask each jurisdiction to fit their various branches into those categories. And maybe, Jamie, you could help with the category discussion, so that, you know, so that your project is, you know, is, I mean, I think yours is going to be one of the ones that has a couple of other elements to it, like the redevelopment piece and other pieces. But the rest of them should be more simple.
I think overlaying on that template could probably be included when your funding requirement is. So you might have each of those, but then when you actually have to trigger some sort of financing, it's really...
Right. It would be on a timeline.
Yeah. Because I'm thinking, you know, we're hoping to begin construction basically next spring of '18, not next spring, spring of '18. But between now and then, a very probably, you know, depending on whether we pick up the adjacent parcel, it could have $2 million in project costs. So there's both, you know, starting construction, spring of '18. At that point, I'd need the full $8 million. But between now and then, potentially I'm incurring a lot. And, you know, obviously, the bond may not be the answer in all that. I mean, I may need bridge financing.
Yeah. Well, I think we'll be able to accommodate what everybody needs out of the bond financing to the total capacity of what's available, which, again, may, you know, you may wish to do something more than what, you know, the bond provides for. But that's, like with the redevelopment funds, that's going to be up to you. So for example, if, let's say, Capitola's number is $10 million, they want $1 million the first year, $3 million the second year, and $6 million the third year, that's what the schedule's going to be. And then, again, for the activities that they would outline for us, and then Santa Cruz has $25 million, let's say, and they want $2 million upfront, and then they want $2 million the second year, but then they want $22 million the third year, or whatever the residual amount would be for them.
So what I thought would be really interesting is, maybe having a conversation as a board, that we talk about distributing the PEGO based on the formula for the full bond distribution.
I don't know that you want to do that.
Well, okay, yeah. I, I thought that the LFA said something like that.
You can.
You could.
Yeah.
But I think having a conversation, though, about, for example, if Capitola could get more than its 12% of the PEGO amount, we might be able to hold off that first bond issue by 18 months or something, which, over the time, may let us only do two bond issues, and would just make this whole thing a lot more efficient. If, if the city of Santa Cruz didn't need its 50% of the PEGO amount in this first year or year and a half, because, you know, you're not working on a project.
So here's my suggestion of how to get to that point. It's to first get your unencumbered chart developed. In other words, forget about where the cash flow is, and forget about when the money's coming in, and forget about when Suzanne's talking about issuing the bonds, and just let's look at what we would need if we were unrestricted by any of these details. And then let's figure out how to try to get us as much as we can get. Because I think you're right, but we don't see, the problem with the PEGO, and I talked to Nicole a little bit about this, we did contemplate the, you know, the reserve for the bond, we did contemplate the reimbursement for the election costs and the other startup costs, and we estimated the residual based on the capacity that the bond would generate. Now, we did estimate conservatively, so there could be more money at the end. But if you start spending all of your PEGO, you're not going to have enough money to meet the bond requirements. And the PEGO amounts really have to apply to your total amount.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, then you're going to have less bonding capacity over time. So I think if we get the unencumbered list first, and see if we could do everybody's desired program with what we've got, and I think we should be able to, you know, we might move that August of next year up. Like, so for now, for example, we have some expenditures anticipated in Felton, and we talked, Nicole and I talked about how best to accomplish that, because we don't have cash in our hands. Well, one thing we could do is use the money out of the trust fund that there is set aside for Felton, and then when the bond proceeds come in, reimburse the trust fund so that they can have more flexible, you know, financing to do things that they may wish to do with their other-than-bond, you know, allocation funds at some point in the future. But again, we can decide that when it comes time, but until we know how much does one need when, forgetting about who's paying for it at the moment, you know, we'll be able to deal with that. And the same with the RDA money. We could use that as a, as a bridge to, you know, kind of accommodate some of the, some of the cash flow kinds of considerations that we all might have. But I would expect that when Santa Cruz goes out to do their planning, you know, consultant, to do the, that's going to be a big-ticket item, and it's, you know, that the PEGO is not going to be sufficient to accommodate our front-end costs and their, you know, their startups. So I think we'd be better off just moving that August date forward if we had to.
Susan, how hard is the five years you can sell bonds, plus three years from a bond sale you can build? How hard is that eight-year window? Because that's a lot to accomplish in eight years.
I think the three-year is a hard number, and the five-year is an estimate based on, you know, what's going to happen with inflation, and then how many years would be left to pay back the bonds, and how much money you'd have, and what you did on the front end with the PEGO money that you've accomplished. So in other words, let's say we were drawing down our proceeds until year five, let's say. Then the question is, well, do you have the rest of that money just sitting there in a sinking fund to pay those bond proceeds, which would be what you'd want to do, rather than distribute it to us and then have us spending it for different things, and then having to take a 25-year bond, I mean, a 30-year bond down to 25 years or something at the end?
But that could work. I mean...
It could work.
If, you know, Capitola got $2 million of PEGO, and then we'd only be getting $6 million of bond proceeds, and so the total bond issue, instead of being 67 million, was 60.
It could work. It could work. And again, that's why I say, let's get the unencumbered first.
Yeah.
And then let's figure out the best way to finance it. And Suzanne is really good at this, so she will, she will tell us. And she knows that, she knows what our flexibilities are in terms of, you know, where we could get money from to do different things. And again, I think if we, if we're all willing to cash flow it, like, for example, if the county were to cash flow some of the startup costs with anticipation that will be repaid later, you know, I think that can be a part of the formula as well. But the first thing to do is figure out what does everybody need when. Unencumbered desires, you know, first, and then, you know, then we'll try to make it all work. Now, on an accounting basis, what Edith is doing, because again, remember, she's working with the trustees in the bank in New York and all those people who are going to handle the cash, is she's going to have the various accounts for each of our jurisdictions, and you're going to each have a drawdown process. So for example, if you, you know, want to draw down, you know, $1 million for an architect, you're going to send her a request for cash, and she's going to draw it down from whatever the amount is, whether we set it up through a, you know, a bond proceed, or a PEGO, or a, you know, paid-out RDA this time, or whatever we chose to, you know, tell her to do. She's, her job is just ministerial. She's going to follow the wishes of the jurisdictions in terms of the payment of those bills, and she's going to, you know, set it up based on the limits that we have in the, in the measure.
Okay. So Nicole, can you develop kind of a template for us to work off?
Yeah, I can. We actually have... Yeah, I can, we actually have, our director of capital projects has started one for the county, so I could probably use what, you know, she's creating to create a template for all.
And we should ask Suzanne if it's going to be adequate for the purposes of, you know, expenditures over time, so then you draw down off that template?
Yeah.
So, kind of like a little mini-chart of it now.
Is that timeline to develop this, how quickly? Because I know at our, from our perspective, we're not anywhere near any sort of final determination, or even really robustly in the conversations about it. So we're a little bit behind, I think, in certain Capitola and some other places. So what do we want to agree is a timeline, or a sense where we'd want to have this schedule of just unencumbered?
Well, again, I think the goal is to spend all the money in eight years.
I'm sorry, just for this part of the phase, this part of the process?
Right.
Just filling out the template Nicole's going to send forth. Do we want to have this back by September, by November? I mean, how quickly do we need to move?
So there's one strategy, is if you don't need money for the first three years, and you're willing to not take any of the PEGO, you'll say, hey, look, we have our $25 million in the bond, we're going to talk to you about it in 36 months or 24 months, we don't need any. I don't know that we need to have any information from you. Right? Because I mean, basically, we know that the first bond issue.
But you need to know that.
Yeah, we would need to know.
You need to know that we're like, we are.
You're totally comfortable.
We're sending it back for three years.
Sitting on your hands for three years.
Which we're not, but.
Yeah. I don't think it'd be one to really want that.
Yeah. But, but, I mean, you know, in Nicole's first, what you're talking about here, this first bond issue is in 1718, you may say, well, between now and the middle of 1718, we are going to be comfortable doing nothing, in which, in which case, we sort of develop plans. It's not that relevant.
I just need to know how aggressively are you going to work with it. I mean, it seems like if once we have that spreadsheet, to your point, and your plan, then we can really come up with what's the best obvious financial strategy to pursue. And we kind of need to know that sooner than later, so we can set things in motion for the issue in next August.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to get set up if we're going to actually issue next year. One consideration is, in this current fiscal year, we have the special tax levy, so if the county or Capitola or anyone else wants or needs some of that PEGO, then the LFA is going to have to adopt some sort of budget and cash flow to actually distribute those funds. So the sooner we can develop that budget and cash flow to then make those funds available to the jurisdictions that need them, we should do that. But if Santa Cruz isn't going to need any of the PEGO in this year, then maybe waive it, and then we distribute it to whoever needs it, and then we figure out, you know, the rest of the funding after that. But there are a couple of different things going on here, you know, the immediate year and then the long-term outlook.
Because Capitola is definitely in a situation, like I said, well, we made maybe $2 million here between the architect fees and this land acquisition before a bond issue, and I, you know, I can't cash flow that.
So we're sort of in the same situation with the Aptos branch, because we don't have detailed plans, and we, you know, we have the conceptual information that's contained in the report that was done by the architects for the library, but, you know, what we decide to do and how we decide to do it is still TBD, so they're not going to be going out at the same time that Felton is going out. But we don't want to wait and start working on that, you know, a long time from now, we want to be able to start. So if you assume, and this is what we'll do, is we'll assume that it's a $10 million project that we're going to try to accomplish in three years, and that the question will be, okay, well, then you need, you know, 18 months for construction, and you need 12 months for pre-design, and pre-design is roughly 30% of the total budget amount, and so we're going to put $3 million in year two, assuming that we're going to get started in year two, or we're going to put, you know, a million and a half at the end of year one, and then another million and a half in year two, or, you know, some way to kind of get the work started. And then we're going to be kind of, you know, we'll be able to adjust those amounts as we go along, because if we issue the first one, and then it turns out that the second one, we want to do something a little different, we could change our mind. I mean, we could, like I say, we could issue the entire thing right now if we wanted to. But the factor is going to be, well, what do you want us to build? And, you know, what do you want it to look like? And what community participation process do you want? And, you know, all of those kinds of things, which, you know, our board hasn't considered, as says your council, hasn't considered any of the downtown issues.
Yeah, I suspect from us, we'll be able to tell you, we can't tell you now, but we'll tell you when we can tell you. That's what I think is actually going to be realistic. Because we haven't done that process at all, we've got so many opportunity sites in Santa Cruz, and things you're reading about in the newspaper, we're contemplating that they all could be implicated, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's a bit hard for me to do this quickly, I think, is my point.
And then the thing, so the thing to do would be to say, I think, for, you know, for your purposes, we're not going to have those decisions finalized by, let's say, you know, August, so it's not going to be year one, but it would, could be year two. And then in year two, you could want some money, so we could put some money in the bond to start your pre-planning work, and then, you know, if it turns out to be off, and you subsidize the project until you can get reimbursed, I think that's okay, and I expect that we would all be willing to do that to some degree, because, you know, this estimating process is really just that, it's just estimating.
Yeah, great. It may be worthwhile to back up from the eight-year out here and figure out when key decisions would have to be made. I think yours is going to be the most complex, and potentially have the most sort of partnerships and other entities working with. I would love to see the timeline from, this is the drop dead day, we can't go beyond here, and back it up, just at a really high level, so that you know how far you can wait.
That's great. And actually, I like the eight-year too, because we don't want to wait that long to deliver this to our, you know, to our constituencies either.
No, they just voted for it, they want it to happen tomorrow.
Yeah, so we'll see if things happen around the county, and, yeah, I think we don't want to push it beyond that, too. That's a really great suggestion.
And I just have to articulate that there are going to be capacity issues in terms of staff and assistance, both at your jurisdictions and at the library, if we're trying to do too much at once. So there is some reason to sort of be planful. I know there are ebbs and flows in every project, it's always a hurry-up-and-wait kind of activity, but, you know, it is great if we could think, big project, here's a wait period, let's do a small project there. I would just love to think about this also from a capacity standpoint.
Yeah. I think the big bugaboo's are going to be Aptos, the main branch, Capitola, and Felton, because those are the sort of build-a-new-building construction projects, really.
And it would be hard to have multiples of those.
Right. And I think fortuitously, you're going to have two ready to go relatively quickly, and I think, you know, both communities are in a good position to deliver on their ends, and I think really the question is just going to be, you know, what do you want the insight to be like? And, you know, are we going to be, you know, changing?
I think those two are going to work at the same time, in part because of all the planning we've done.
To date.
To date.
Right.
But I would.
But, and then the little ones.
I did worry about the downtown one, because that one's going to be very complex.
And the little ones, I think Nicole's right, we could just kind of put those in as we go along, I think, you know, what we do in, in some of those smaller branches, like, you know, Bransaforti and Los Alba Beach, and, you know, those, those will, they'll take, they'll take community time, but they won't, it won't be a very lengthy process.
And Susan, I would really love to learn from your experience, you know, having rebuilt seven branches in Ramsey County, and, I don't, I mean, it's not a conversation for today, and I don't know if that's something the other cities in the county want to be a part of, but I would really love to just to hear more about that experience, and how you approached the planning, and how you dealt with the timeline, and the outreach, and all that. I think that could be very helpful for us.
And you know, I know it may be a lot to ask, but you might want to put us a little list of a self-guided tour that we all could take, of the ones that are around here that are really kind of cool libraries. I recently had a chance to go to the one over in Los Gatos, and what a cool library. I was really impressed with some of the things they had done, and I'm sure there's plenty of other good examples like that out there.
My library committee has actually, has asked me to organize that for September, that we would be doing.
Do you think we can tag along? Maybe other people who wish to tag along?
I don't think it would be a problem, we just have round act issues if we have more of this board attending than a majority, but, yeah, our library advisory committee has asked for that, we're going to kind of put together a couple of branches in this.
Area.
Basic area.
Any council members on that committee, or?
There's one council member. There's one council member.
Yeah, well, maybe we can think about that.
Okay, can we move on?
Yeah.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm trying to summarize next steps. We'll bring the administrative cost agreement contract in September, hopefully after Marcus and Rich meet with Susan.
And you'll come to that, I hope.
I would love to come to that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
The reserve policy decision, I was anticipating we would make a decision in September, but it sounds like the direction is that we will go in this budget with a current policy and in the fall. I'll put it on my three- and six-month to-do list. We'll begin to develop.
And I didn't hear that. I heard that we would follow your recommendations in September, or we would ask for your recommendations in September.
Okay. Bring final 2016-17 budget for approval in September.
Right.
Create a plan for library balances in September. Money is so rare. I'm thrilled that there's going to be a library balance in September. The truth of the matter, though, is I feel ill-prepared to make major decisions. I'm assuming we treat this balance as if it's a one-time fund, not recurring. I think that the things that we need are pretty much the traditional hours, books, and, what'd you say?
Hours, books, and facilities.
I was going to say facilities, but the tech piece came up, too. The other piece that's going to happen is, I'm proposing we do a strategic plan this fall. I would love to have some money that we set aside so that we can do, I like to pilot ideas, so that we could do some pilot projects at the end of this, and sometimes that takes a little bit of money. So I have a desire to not spend it all in September. One of the things that's interesting is, if we get the reimbursement, we will not likely get that reimbursement until January, so I would think that would argue from the LFA if they're taking it from the.
PEGO.
And so I think the strategic plan really needs to spend some serious time thinking about our collections goal and our hours. We could do something, I guarantee if you spend money in September, you're not going to regret putting it into books, or hours, or facilities, or IT, but I think it could be better spent if we wait till January, and I know that's a hard thing when resources are tight.
So can I just say one thing about the library balances? Because again, I tried to make this point before, but I may have been too subtle. I don't think that what we did today by authorizing the reimbursement is a one-time advantage, because as it stands now, we have all of those costs built into our operating budget, paid for by our operating revenues. They're not paid for by one-time revenues that might have been identified somewhere. So those, so that $500,000 or so is going to be $500,000 that you're going to now have available this year and every year thereafter, because we're not spending it on something else.
Marcus, did you plan the $400,000?
I looked forward.
Not the 400.
The one-time cost. But you're not going to know your projections.
I'm assuming that we'll have to actually pay the $400,000 that's not yet budgeted in our worksheet. And I'm assuming that the money we paid for the last two years will balance down into the column below that says balance.
Okay, so maybe the better way to say it is, if it is truly one-time money, we'll treat it as one-time, but if it has an ongoing character, I don't see any reason to treat it as one-time, and it may be that some of it doesn't because of the way he, the way he budgeted it.
But as, and I haven't added up the number, the way I'm seeing it is we'll, we'll come with a balance in September of under five, between $400,000 and $500,000, is that correct?
Well, we'd be thinking 7.
761.
The piece, though, is that I have to actually pay the election cost, because I didn't budget for the election cost yet in 1617. So that 350, I need you to reimburse me, and then I need to pay the election cost. So that's where I'm getting, is that incorrect?
He's going to put in the revenue for the 350 and the expenditure for the 350.
Right.
And he's not going to worry about your cash flow right now.
But the balance at the bottom is going to be under five, because what it's going to do is the 251 from the new administrative agreement, it's going to add the 18 that was currently there, and then it's going to add our past reimbursements for prior years that have already been spent, which.
Well, so I think, I think now we are talking about two separate numbers. I think that the, the fund balance is actually going to be 761 approximately. I'm adding too much detail that is really warranted, but it's about the 200,000 plus the 560 in reimbursement. As I understand it, I think that is sort of a one-time pot of money that has accumulated over the years based on various differences between spending and now, the 260, is it?
Sorry, I can't look it up.
It's the delta between.
But see, what Marcus is saying is that he doesn't have all of those costs in the budget at the current time.
So the 340 will have to add.
That's what he was saying. A part of the 350, for example, he doesn't have.
As an expenditure.
As an expenditure.
Oh, I know, but remember, he gave us the little worksheet that had the kind of.
Right, right, right.
But we're saying, Marcus, so the upbringing.
This worksheet, the impact on fund balance worksheet, yeah. Anyways. So, but the delta between the 7, 710 and the.
469?
Yeah.
250.
Is undoubtedly ongoing.
I think some of it, we don't have to decide what it is today. I just think that some of it is ongoing and some of it is one-time, and it will depend on how Marcus has handled it in some of the accounting, and I don't profess to be ready to say what that is today, because I don't remember.
I think Jamie is correct, that would be recurring, but our reserve policy says it would need to be three years of recurring before you could spend it on something recurring.
Well, you're going to give us recommendations on that in September, so I think you can tell us what you think, even if they're interim policies that are going to carry us through just this year, and then we'll do more with the strategic planning process, because I don't, I don't know that, I think you should take your fund balance that's available and use it flexibly for this next year, because there's so much uncertainty in all of the things that we're doing. We want to give you the tools to get the job done, not tie ourselves up and not base on policies that were adopted five years ago that may or may not be the ones that we want to keep.
Are you comfortable holding the fund balance a little bit longer?
Yeah, I am. And for the benefit of Marcus, because I think you're, you're ESPN-ing me. That was deliberate. The graphic that you did on page 13, that showed the change, the effect of the change of overhead and expenditure revenue over time is factoring in that new overhead rate, and it still shows that we're in the red three years out. And that was the point I could tell you were trying to make.
Is that the?
So whether you want to call it recurring or not, it recurs it, but we still.
Have a problem.
Have a problem, if we believe 2.5%.
Right, but again, just because we have a problem, doesn't mean that you have to solve it.
Today.
Out of this pot of money. You could decide something different with this pot of money, and we still have the problem.
Yes. And things will be different in three years.
That's right.
They always are.
They always are.
And they may be worse.
They may be worse, and they may be better.
Okay. So then my last thing I want.
But they will be the same.
To talk about was just sort of my three- and six-month plan. I'm a little overwhelmed with things I would love to work on, and so I just wanted to try to focus a little bit and make sure that I'm meeting your goals. Oops, that was it. So the revert, reserve policy agreement, overhead payments, Measure S reimbursement.
Before we go off reserve policy agreement, I would be satisfied with just a revision to the reserve policy for one year, and then referring it to the strategic planning process, so we could have a fuller discussion, if others would be satisfied with that, but I would like to make some changes to it in this year. I don't know if people feel like that's too quick and too much for the first year, but.
So I understand your idea, so some revisions to the policy to be effective this fiscal year that we're in now.
Right.
And then of a minor nature?
Well, I don't know how much of a minor and major, some people may. Well, I don't know how much of a minor and major, some people may look at it differently, but I would say, for example, I kind of had that list that I read off before. I would think we'd want a reserve for economic uncertainties. I think something in the 8% to 10% is probably reasonable. I think we want to have a contingency, something in the 2% to 4% is probably reasonable. I think we want to have, you know, so I think we can fill, and we want to have a reserve policy for equipment and IT and for vehicles, and, you know, we could set those things up, and I think we would get to less than the 16.77, and we wouldn't have the policy that says, and if you have anything left over, it gets reallocated to specific things. I would probably say for this year, let's just hold on any of those things for now, and then do a deeper dive during the strategic planning process, and be able to even look at how the first year's going with the, you know, kind of think of it as a pilot or something like that. I only throw that out as a possibility, because I think if we hate that idea, we should tell Susan now that we hate it, but if she...
A temporary solution for the budget and a long-term analysis for...
For the strategic plan, which would again intend to try to deal with all of your litany of tasks, not putting everything on the first three months that, you know...
I'm okay with that, except for I don't think I'm comfortable at this stage with what I've heard at this point, reducing from the 16%. I really don't, you know, I'm looking at the forecast showing us a deficit situation, and it's hard for me to see starting to take down the overall reserve level. I think the bins you talked about make a lot of sense. I'd like to get something I can get my head around rather than this two-thirds, one-third, and this, you know, I mean, what you talked about made a lot more sense to me and was more sort of in line with how I think about reserves.
And it may be, like right now, she has an equipment reserve, and she has a vehicle fleet reserve. So her reserve is actually more than 16.77% now. So it may be overall that it's not that different from that number. Again, I think if you put 10% in economic uncertainties and 2% in contingencies, now you're at 12, and then you put something in these other things, you may very well get to 16 without, you know... But it would be less than what we are currently putting in the budget for our planning purposes for this year. But anyway, that was the only point, was that we would give it to her to look at, not that we would decide today whether 12 is too much, 16 is too little, or, you know, but if we hated that idea, we shouldn't have to spend time looking at it.
Okay. So for me, I just want to distinguish between that and then a deeper dive, because that seems actually pretty deep right now to do that. I don't know the amount of work to go in and look at those various reserves and look at what's appropriate, so you can come back with recommendations in September, but that seems like that is kind of a lot of work already.
I usually don't jump in, but I just...
Please do. Yeah, we're looking at you.
We appreciate that you do, Marcus.
Time-wise, there's four weeks from today to when, essentially, the next pack would go out. That's not a lot of time to get already what's on the plate, as well as really provide analysis on reserve recommendation for this year. So that's just a logistical thing, there's already work there. Part two is just a reflection that when we adopted the fourth amendment to the JPA, it also, and amendment to the LFFA, effectively took 40% of libraries' revenues, and we've eliminated growth of that funneling in. So now the library's revenue stream, sales taxes where its growth is going to come from, it's going to be exponential growth comparatively to what it's had in the past to keep up with the costs of services, materials, and just inherent internal growth in costs that are going to happen anyways out of our control. So that's just, when the two-month was adopted, and this gets to the point of, I'm not trying to direct that whether 16 is the right number or not, I'm just putting concept, three years ago, when it was adopted, there were two revenue streams that I was able to count on growth from, and now there's one. So that's putting a lot of grace in one basket to expect high growth in the next four or five years. There's not, a lot of people think there's going to be 7%, 8%, 9% growth in sales tax.
Jamie put us checkbook, though.
Yeah. So until the amendments are amended and it's more reflective of the ESA and the 911 central members can help offset that, right now it stands that LFFA funding going into libraries, that's the pot of money.
Susan, do you think you'd be comfortable with the current $2.3 million if we looked at the sort of sub-surplus policy and modified that in the short run? Because that describes how we can spend the balance we have. And you seemed really uncomfortable with those restrictions.
Yeah, I think unnecessarily ties your hands, but, you know, I mean, if you'd like, I'd be happy to, I can, I mean, this is something that could take a long time if you wanted to, or I could write it up tonight when I have nothing better to do. So, I mean, I can, you know, I mean, I'd be happy to take a stab and bring a proposal back in September and let you guys take a look at it. The only thing I would want to know is what's the vehicle reserve and what's the equipment reserve and the computer reserve? I have the other two reserves. And I think I could come back with something that we'd all feel completely comfortable with, and, you know, if you wanted to. I mean, it's up to you, I don't want to, you know, volunteer for things that you'd rather do yourself. I'm happy to have you do them, but I don't think it's that big of a deal, really. I think we can make it a big deal, and I'm not suggesting that it be permanent, I'm just suggesting that it provides some financing for you for the current year. And again, we're going to do a strategic plan, so we're going to want to take a deeper dive in some of these things, and, you know, we'll have at least a few months of experience. I mean, you don't need two months of operating reserve for an institution like this. I mean, you're not going to have a disaster, you're not going to have a, you know, they're not your buildings, they're not, I mean, what's going to go wrong that, you know, the only thing that's going to happen is an economic downturn. So you need money to have a soft landing, you know, and that's how we used our reserves in the counties. We depleted, you know, some fairly material reserves over the course of the economic downturn, but now we're, you know, we're building them back up. You guys built them up when, you know, when you had the economic downturn, so you're way ahead of the game, and you've got, you know, you've got a decent amount of money sitting there for that purpose.
And I'm still learning, but for me, if you look at the issues in this presentation, libraries' greatest needs are recurring.
Yes.
And so if we take significantly out of reserve right now, and we get the reimbursement, and we have this balance from the admin, I get a really large pool of one-time funds when what I really like is even a much smaller pool of recurring funds. I just think every unit of local government is facing that issue, and I know that it doesn't work that way, but that's my struggle.
But see, but the one-time funds, and the reoccurring funds, and Marcus, you should help me on this, because I'm obviously not articulating it adequately. If you reduce the amount of your reserve requirement from, let's say, 16.77% to 13% or 12%, and we fund the other reserves for economic uncertainties, and we establish a contingency, and we have a reserve for vehicles and equipment as we do already, apparently, not the $2.3 million, I'm not talking about stealing money from that account and using it for something different. We leave that, whatever those one-time monies are that are sitting there, they still sit there, but then we allocate a lesser percentage of the budget to that purpose, that is ongoing money, that's not one-time money. And the same would be true if you reduce the amount of money that you're going to be paying the city of Santa Cruz. If you're saving $200,000, that's ongoing money, that's not one-time money, because it's, now again...
$15,000 is recurring, but the rest of it becomes one-time.
Which was recurring?
The $15,000.
Sorry.
That's the allocation to the reserve for this year.
But no, no, it's your point, Susan. If we drop it from 16 to 10%, that's a percentage point swing. Every percent's about $130,000.
Right.
That's a material number that you're not, you're not having to direct from operations into reserves.
That's correct. So that becomes ongoing revenue available to the operation of the budget. It's not the $15,000. The $15,000 is the excess that you need to make in order to meet his formulaic requirements.
You know what I think we need then, in September?
I'm sorry, I'm so...
If you're putting, if you want to keep a lower bank balance, you're putting less money into it every year, so you've got more money to spend then.
Yeah, but...
Like the interest rate went down.
Yeah, but if revenues are flat, there's nothing going in. Nothing going into the account, right?
If you need $100,000 over here and you just keep it, it doesn't affect your payments, your expenditures.
Right. But he is predicting...
You would have a one-time dispersment if you lower the balance.
You'd have a one-time dispersment for lowering the balance, but then you would have an ongoing amount of revenue dependent upon how much growth occurred in the general purpose revenues and the way those relate to whatever Marcus has on those cheats, which I haven't memorized yet.
And maybe what we can do then, because I know that there's a lot being asked, and there's a lot of writing on the September meeting, is you're coming with a budget, so I think maybe the budget has still the existing 6.77% in it. And then we also have a simple analysis. Excuse me, it's my turn to cough now. Where we present the existing reserve funds, what they are and what their balances is, and then balances is, balances are, and then we also can give a relative...
It's a technical term.
After four hours, I think it is. And then we also talk about, you know, what this reserve protects, so you can get a relative sense of proportion and percentage. And then we can catalog all of that, and we can look at against the 16%, and I think your board can really decide what do we feel comfortable with. And then also, if you have ideas about if there was a reduction, and we reflected some of it, how would you spend it? I think that'd be very helpful.
And so my answer in September is going to be, I want to wait till January before I answer that question.
I appreciate that.
And I mean, I think we can look up our mini-reserve accounts. The only one I'm aware of is vehicles. We don't have IT, we don't have facilities, we don't have, so we'll pull up the vehicle fund so you can see it.
And it's based on when the library anticipates buying something, so I'll have a question for you.
We just spent it. I'll do my best. I just want to say that as part of the strategic plan, though, we're going to have to take on these long-term budget issues and create some step-up plans to deal with some of these issues. I have met with all my internal staff groups and branches. We're going to spend a lot of August working on the process for strategic planning, and we'd like to show you what we hope to do next September at our September meeting. We need to develop that timeline for Measure S bonding and project priorities. We need to update our building standards document, which was something that was done years ago that we just want to bring up to date. We want to work with Capitola and Felton to keep moving those projects forward. We need to begin internal succession planning. Three of five of the senior staff are in the category of very eligible to retire. Unfortunately, this highly centralized org structure also kind of, we lost sort of middle management in it, and so we have, I think, some significant issues in terms of developing the skills of staff to be prepared to take on leadership roles. We, I'm trying to visit all the Friends groups, having a good time with that, and that Central Friends are hiring an executive director, and I'm going to help them this week with, or next week with that. It's really important, from my perspective, for the Friends to be vital organizations. And I hope, in my last job, I was allowed to spend time with the Friends, helping them. I think it can add great value, both to the advocacy for the library, but also to the financial picture. And one of the things I wanted to clarify is that you're comfortable with me spending a portion of my time on those relationships?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? What is the library building standards document?
It was a document that was done three, four years ago that created lighting standards, shelving standards, and some furniture standards. And it really is trying to, and I've talked to Betsy about this, and I've talked to Teal about this, and I've talked to Capitola about this. So the extent to which we all buy gray shelves in the same categories, they are interchangeable, it's this concept of could we go with a single security system, a single key card system just to save staffing costs? And it, though, requires each and every one of you to think about this collectively a bit, and I think it could save us money in the long run.
Thank you.
And then six months. Oh, there it is. So I think we really spend the fall doing the strategic plan. I think the big issue that's coming out is sort of centralized versus federated, this operating piece. The thing that's coming out of the staff conversation is both our organizational structure and the structure of public services. I don't want to presume too much of the plan in advance, but I think those are big issues that will come out. The idea is that I would assume the leadership of the LFFA in October, and then continue on the facilities improvement projects. And my goal is to work with the Friends to develop capital campaigns around each of the projects so that the libraries can contain some of the, I had someone call it, make a house a home. Sort of the wonderful, I think Scotts Valley is a great example of features of the building that really make it unique and whimsical and memorable and fun. So, am I missing anything?
The only thing I was going to comment on, and I appreciate your desire to move into the role with the library facility financing authority, but the next, you know, bunch of work is going to occur in the next three months, and Rich has been great, from my opinion, I don't know about the other board members, but I think he's been a real big help to just get things organized and get them going, and I always refer to him as our own little, you know, pit bull. He runs after it, and he makes sure it gets done, and, you know, to the extent that you can use that support, I would hope that you would, and I know that costs us a little bit of money, but if you can do it and you've got the ability to do it with everything else on your plate, I'm thrilled. But again, I just think he's there as a resource, and, you know, you shouldn't feel like just because we said we'd like you to take it over instantly that you have to do that if it's too much for you to do, and I don't know how other board members feel about that, but...
We had the same conversation.
Oh, good.
Almost word for word, the same direction, saying, hey, he's a resource, if you need him, use him, you know, to the extent that you don't overwhelm yourself.
Yes, he's very conscientious, so he'll, you know, he'll do a good job with you, I'm sure.
I think the immediate plan is for Nicole and I and Suzanne...
Suzanne, Helen, and Eda.
And Eda.
And Rich, Will, and Suzanne.
To work, so we're going to do a transitionary period work together. I think we'll keep Rich on the payroll so that if we need to pull him back on projects, that we can do so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I would like to thank him at our next meeting, if that's something we can do to acknowledge him in some way, maybe.
If you're not exhausted, I can show you pictures of my dog.
Well, I think Tina and I are going to another JPA meeting right now.
We are.
Yeah. We've had enough today.
Oh, my gosh, I took the whole time.
Oh, it's great, though.
And then I get to go into a closed session, and then I lay back and think out to me.
I'll see you then.
Oh, you win. I think it might be the longest day. Not this is bad, but the longest day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, it's a long preparation.
So what's the difference between confederated and federated?
Oh, yeah. This is a good...
Sorry, I got distracted right there, Karen. You have it all the way.
I gotta go with that.
So the Confederate States of America, that was, they broke from the Union.
Right, I thought Confederacy was like more loosely affiliated, Federated was like tighter, so I was thinking centralized versus Confederate.
They were sitting in it, too, fell. They're closer than...
But I think you're correct.
So you would say centralized versus confederated?
Yeah.
That was what I thought, but I'm not sure that that's correct.
But you got us thinking, so now we're all going to consult our dictionary.
Now, I'm going to go. Well, it seems like a good week with the Democratic Convention going on to be...
Oh, a Confederation.
...opining these things.
A Confederation is voluntary, and while the membership in a Federation is not. So in centralized versus Confederate, that's, that is...
You're not pushing for a flag, right?
Yeah. I want like two screaming Vipers and Eagles.